Call this special meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee to order. It is August sixth, twenty twenty, and it is six o'clock. And we will begin by standing for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. We have three students' comments. The first one is from Sarah Turner, who lives in Bolton. Thank you deeply to all Neshoba staff and school committee members for the extensive work that has been done to ensure a safe reopening of schools. As an incoming kindergarten parent, having heard talk of a different model being considered for this grade level, it would be extremely helpful to hear any update you have in this regard as we all begin to consider scheduling and childcare needs for the fall. Thank you for your time. The next one is from Tracy Lindsay, who lives in Bolton. I know there is a lot of concern about the coming school year and how we will be structured. My questions are specific to the high school. I feel the high school should be handled separately from middle school and K five primary due to vastly different concerns in each age grouping, age grouping. In reading about the proposed hybrid model, it sounds like during the two days at home, students in Cohort A will not be able to simply log into the active class. The Cohort B is attending in person. Why can't students log into the class as it is happening and participate actively? The expectation is that our students will at minimum be able to participate in classes during the days they will remain at home to limit numbers at the high school. If this is not possible, I'd like to know why and what would be needed to make it happen. Why are parents unable, why are parents unable to participate in school committee meetings actively so you can hear our voices? These are very unusual times, and the school administrators, school committee members, and superintendents need to hear from us. As it stands, you are only hearing from a tiny percentage of voices on phone, from Facebook and emails. People are extremely stressed and concerned, not knowing the fall schedule. What you are hearing is simply not the same as you would hear if parents could speak during meetings. Why can't we NRHS copy another school district's plan such as Acton Box Burrows? It would save resources and the onerous task of reinventing the wheel, which is being done currently by all of the Neshoba school administrators and teachers. And then the last one is from Patrick Mahoney, who lives in Bolton. We are in an early and nearly impossible situation as it relates to the reopening. And while I don't envy you, I do appreciate your hard work so far. I'm writing today because I remain extremely concerned about the ventilation systems in our schools. It's very clear at this point that COVID is airborne. If our buildings are circulating air but not adequately filtering it, one single infected asymptomatic person can put dozens of students and staff at risk, regardless of masks or social distancing boundaries. The fall reopening plan released today has a section on ventilation, which states, "We are preparing to have an independent contract to review our systems across the district. We will continue to work collaboratively with others, find ways to ensure the best possible air quality we can achieve." COVID has been ravaging this country for five months. Indoor settings are known to be particularly dangerous. We're five weeks away from sending staff and kids into the schools. How on earth is the district just now preparing to have an independent contract to review our systems? According to the American Society of Heating, Refrigeration, and Air Conditioning Engineers, there are two key strategies for countering poor ventilation and airborne virus indoors. Dilute the presence of viral particles by exchanging air in the room with air from outside. Remove viral particles from the air with filters. As I understand it, and I'd love for someone to correct me on this, our ventilation systems currently are not prepared to do either adequately. They don't meet CDC guidance, either in terms of the number of cycles of fresh air per hour or MERV rating. From conversations with Superintendent Clancy, we're stuck at MERV eight and MERV ten, both of which are not effective at filtering our viruses. Fall reopening plan indicates that we have purchased some indoor air quality devices, but it's not clear how many and to what effect. Can someone speak in detail about how these devices will be deployed? Seems critical to me that our community discuss this so parents and staff can make the best decisions for their family. Yesterday, I asked Superintendent Clancy to make this discussion a priority tonight, and she replied, "I imagine this will be part of the broader discussion." Would I like to ask someone on the school committee to use your voice to make sure it's part of the discussion tonight? We're in the midst of a once-in-a-lifetime respiratory pandemic. Think it is reasonable to expect a serious and upfront discussion about the ventilation system in our school. Again, thanks for your time. So those are the public comments for tonight. So our, um, one agenda item is about the reopening of school. And before I turn, are you waving at me?
Yeah, can we just verify who else is on the meeting on this phone? Is that Rich, is that Rich Echo? I let somebody in, but I don't know who this is.
Oh.
Is that, is that Rich?
Yeah, zero seven five six, that's me.
We can't hear you that well. How did you let him in if you didn't know who it was?
Because I recognized the cell phone number from before.
All right.
Hey, Leah, it's Rich Echo.
Okay, Rich, we can hear you now. All right, thank you. Um, before I turn it over, I just want to echo what came through loud and clear in many of the emails that we received since our last meeting, and that have been a similar theme in the emails that we've received since we've begun having these discussions. And that is just to commend Brooke and her leadership team for the tremendous amount of time, effort, skill, intelligence, thoughtfulness, outreach, so many things that are the hallmarks of outstanding leadership. And with that also comes folks who are happy with our options for decision-making. And we've, we've been through similar things in terms of a public reaction to what we do and how we do it. But I think that what I've seen over the last few weeks is a real focus on collaboration among all of the departments and within the schools with the principals and their parents and staff. And I just want to extend my, my gratitude. And I've said this, I said this at a couple of meetings, you know, the Commission of Education has told school districts that during these, these times, you have to be comfortable with ambiguity, which is a challenge, I know. But it's easy for me because of Brooke's leadership and the leadership of the members of her administrative team and the dedication of the teachers who are just on their vacation in, in, in light of everything else and without compensation, tremendous amounts of time to support the principals in their discussions about how best to reopen our schools. So thank you, Brooke, and thank you to everyone who's participating in this effort. So turn it over to you, Brooke. So again, I think Brooke will talk about, she'll give us a little context. Talk about the format for tonight. And when she's done, if there are additional questions that the school committee has, then I will poll the group to see who has questions, and we will get some answers for you. Everybody good? How about a thumbs up if we're all good? Okay, thank you. It's all yours, Brooke.
Okay, thank you. So Todd and I will start this. Um, we're going to, in, in terms of the topics that we want to, we want to cover tonight. And we also have members of our team here who will be available if there are other questions that we, Todd nor I can answer. There may well be questions that there are no answers to yet. You know, I, I received an email just before I came into the, the, um, the, the meeting tonight, saying, you know, seems like you're always waiting for guidance. And I thought to myself, it's because it's true. We're always waiting for guidance. I thought, boy, I couldn't have coined that any better if I tried. You know, we're still waiting for guidance from EEC and DESE, for example, with our K and pre-K before we can move forward in those two areas. And I know that that's really hard for our K and pre-K parents because they're youngest parents and they're our babies. And, you know, you just want to make sure that they're settled right away. But hopefully, within the next week, we'll have some of that pulled together. Um, so we're, we're going to want to go through the plan quickly. We're not going to read through it. We know that you've all read it, so we're not going to do that. Um, and then, you know, we've got team members here. Uh, Tom Hool is here for food services, Joan DeAngelis for SPED, Rob Freeswood for Buildings, Pat Maroni, if there's anything budget-related, Anne Marie, if there's anything linked to hu- uh, HR department. Joel is representing our principals group tonight because I didn't want to ask them to all come out tonight. I said, why don't, why don't you just send a representative? And Joel volunteered for tonight, and I think Ross and Kyle are coming on Monday night. So we thank you very much for, for that, too. Um, so we thought we would, and there were, and Mike, thanks so much for pointing out my course, for pointing out, we didn't realize that there were two documents going with questions. So thank you when you sent your email. I thought, what questions is he talking about? So tonight, we'll make sure that we go to both of those documents and try to make sure that everything is answered. Um, and then some things came up throughout the course of today that we'll probably touch on tonight. So we're going to go through the document. Our team is here to answer questions, but before we go to their questions and the questions in general, I want to spend a few minutes just specifically on the high school. And that's because we have done a lot of thinking and rethinking and reaching out to other superintendents, reaching out to other principals. You know, one of the things that I think you, you don't realize unless you're in our, our world is how interconnected school districts are. And so it's nothing for me to, to send out an email to ten, fifteen, or twenty superintendents and get back, you know, ten or fifteen responses within two to three minutes because that's how we operate. And so, and the same thing goes with, with Todd. He would tell you the same thing, you know. I've got standing meetings regularly. My husband, of course, belongs to a different organization. He belongs to the Merrimack Valley. So of course, once I'm done with my groups, which are the Worcester County and the Assabette, then, you know, he and I connect on what's going on with Merrimack. And so we always have a really good idea of what's going on across the state. And then Todd meets regularly with his group on Fridays. But quite frankly, you meet independently with them throughout the course of the week, as do I. Like, today wasn't a scheduled meeting, but I easily met with probably ten to fifteen superintendents this morning. And that wasn't a scheduled meeting is because there were some things that were floating about there. We wanted to make sure that we were all grounded, that we were all on the same page. So when people say, you know, do it like such and such because they've already got this done or you don't have to reinvent the wheel or whatever, well, the truth is, we actually are all inventing a wheel here. And, you know, one of the things that, that I just want to speak to for a minute or two before we get in there, and I, I appreciate Patrick's line in, in his email that talked about that this is a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. Again, we could not have coined that any better. And I think that we need to make sure that we do not lose sight of the fact that that's where we still are. And there's a, there's a piece of me, and I'm sure that if I feel this, I'm sure that others feel this too. Of course, we have a little bit different situation because our family's in Canada, like our, our son and our, our, our daughter, beautiful daughter-in-law, perfect grandchild. I know everybody has perfect grandchildren. I have, I have one, too. You know, we can't cross the border, right? Because the borders are closed. And there's no sign of that border opening right now at all. And so there's a piece of me, like, when I thought, oh, my gosh, like, at first, the border was closed, let's say, till May fifteenth. Well, then it was closed until July, I think it, I think it was the twenty-sixth or something. Now it's closed until, and I'm thinking to myself, will that border ever open? I, I don't know, I don't know if it will. And so there's a piece of you that, I, I speak only for myself tonight because maybe nobody else feels this, but there's a piece of me that feels a lot of anger at times because I'm missing part of that normalcy that I'm used to, which is seeing my family. Just like all of you, you want to see your family, you want to see the grandchildren. Like, my granddaughter has grown, I'm sure, like, I don't know, ten inches the last time I saw her. Thank goodness for FaceTime, but it's still not the same, right? And so here we are now going into a school year. And there's a piece of me that's mourning the fact or grieving the fact that we're not able to go back into a, a new, regular school year. It's not the same. It's still different. It's still not normal. And it's, it's not a good feeling. And, and so I think that if I feel like that, I'm, I'm sure that, I'm sure that a lot of other parents are feeling that, too. You know, I got an email today from a mom that just said, I just feel so much stress right now. And, and I wrote back and I said, I know, because you know, as a parent, you feel stressed. As a grandparent, you feel stressed. As a teacher, as a leader, as an administrator, that stress just seems to not leave right now. And, you know, you, you just want, I want us to get to normal again, whatever that takes. I just want us to get there. Um, but we're kind of charged with something different in, in our educational journey right now. And it's like, so how do we still, in these not-normal times, try to find some level of normalcy for our children? And what does that look like? And, you know, Todd and I had some of this discussion earlier today. And I said, you know, sometimes I have to be careful because I'm trying so hard to keep normal in there that I, I can't lose sight of the fact that, oh, that's right, we still need that six-foot distance. We still need, you know. And so all those guidelines that, you know, people want us to pay attention to, but then don't want us to pay attention to because, you know, that, that, that again proves to us that we're not in normal times. And so Patrick's line about a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic, you're absolutely right. This is a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. And with that said, then come other issues like buildings, whether it's our schools across not just Massachusetts, not just Neshoba, but across the country. Were not necessarily built for MERV thirteen ratings. Our hospitals are. Our hospital surgical rooms can have even higher ratings. But schools and commercial buildings as a rule are not. And so they're not built for pandemics. And so then that leaves us in other quandaries, you know. Um, I think I said in one of my emails to Patrick, uh, in our correspondence, that I think Denver, Colorado is doing a whole review of theirs, and I think it's to the tune of four point nine million dollars. And I know Denver, Colorado is a lot different than Neshoba Regional. But nonetheless, there are big dollars that are attached to these kinds of things. And we always have to keep that in the back of our minds as well. So there's a lot that goes into it. It's not just fiscal. I guess that's what I'm trying to say tonight. It's, there's an emotional component to this, too, as we're trying to find our way through and still accomplish the things that we need to accomplish, which is getting the best education that we can for our children. And I think that's one of the reasons why I wanted to carve some different time out for our high school tonight because we've, Steve and I have been communicating with a lot of people in, in the last couple of weeks. And we have some different thinking that we would like to present tonight. And I know Todd and I've had a lot of discussion on this as well. So we're going to go through the plan. We want to carve out some time for the high school, and then we want to make sure that we hit as many questions as we possibly can have. So I, as I said to, to you earlier, and I think Todd will, will get going. And I'm not sure whether, Todd, you're going to bring it up on your screen or Alita, you're bringing it up on yours. I know I spoke with you earlier both, but I just don't remember.
Excuse me, Brooke, uh, yes, Leah?
Guys, um, so just really quickly, I have a process question.
Yeah.
So, um, at this moment in time, are you sharing with us the preliminary plan?
You know what? Thank you so much. I'm so glad you brought that up because I meant to respond to that before. Thank you. This is still the, the summary. And I'm so glad you brought that up because what we put forward was really the summary in saying, this is where we're headed. And that comprehensive plan comes on, you'll probably get it on Sunday, is, is where, where we're headed with that. And the comprehensive plan is, is still a bigger plan. It's about twice the size of the, the summary that you have right now, which isn't really an executive summary, but it's a summary of the, the plan. Um, and then each school will have its own piece that will ultimately follow. Because this isn't going to be, like, our, our plans of the district from the, the broad overarching aren't at the granular level, right? And because each school has to have its own plans in terms of, um, you know, its arrival, its dismissal, it's, you know, its lunches, and those are going to be different for every building. And so that's not something that we would include in our large scale. That's going to be something that will have to come out at the, the more granular level. So right now, what was, you're absolutely right. I'm so glad you brought that up. What we're going to review tonight is go through the, the plan that you got, which is the, the summary. And then we're going to take questions on that. And then you'll get the, the comprehensive plan, um, the, the full comprehensive plan on Sunday. The other thing, too, before we get started, just along those lines, too, we did, we were called into another meeting today with the commissioner that I think they organized yesterday. Todd, I think we got word late yesterday afternoon that, that he wanted to meet with us today. And I think what they're finding is that, that their, the plans are just not, um, they're just not going to be ready for Monday, quite frankly. It, it doesn't matter, and it's, we're in a really, we're in a really good position. The, the Neshoba Regional is a good position because we've got most of our work done. So we feel, um, we feel pretty confident and comfortable with that. Um, but having said that, we still, we feel now that we've got a little bit of gift of time because, uh, the commissioner said today that, you know, school districts really could have at least until the fourteenth of August. If they needed to, the seventeenth of August or longer, they could just reach out to him. Um, so now this, from our lens, this gives us a little bit of time so that maybe Monday night, you might come forward and say, well, can you add this? Or maybe over the weekend or something like that, you, you say, you know, can you beef up this? Can you beef up that so that we can, you know, we've got this to go out? In a perfect world, my hope would be, as I put, sent in the memo, um, out today, too, that, um, we would be able to come to a decision on Monday night. I'm really hoping that you can because then that helps us to go full barrel with, with our next steps. You know, we would see then that a, a survey would go out, a quick survey would go out to the parents. Uh, because I'm sure that people are going to change their minds probably right up until as close to the start of school as possible. And we understand that and we respect that. So, um, so in terms of the plan, yeah, this is just the, the summary that you're, we're going to go through tonight.
Okay, so just to, just to be clear, I'm sorry, Chairwoman. Um, just to be clear, on Sunday, the comprehensive plan is going to be released to the community. And that will include the building plans or no?
No, it will not include the building plans. And it's not that it's released to the community, that's not true. It's released to you. And when it goes to you, it is generally posted on our website right away.
And on Monday, you're hoping to have us decide if we will remain with hybrid or go to full remote?
Right. And then that will make a difference for, if we have to pivot, then we'll have to pivot Tuesday morning and, and make some changes and then probably send out the survey Wednesday rather than Tuesday. And it'll put some other things into play for us, depending on what your position is.
Because we voted on hybrid, but you're wondering if possibly we've had a change of mind and so you might revisit.
Just a quick clarification, if I may. What we voted for, if I'm not mistaken, is to, to, to authorize Brooke to proceed with the hy- a hybrid plan with the option of a remote, with a not remote option. And I think that to give her direction. So now she's coming back with the plan and the other options for us. And that's what we will see in the, in the comprehensive plan. Is that accurate, Brooke?
Yeah, I think the real, if you recall, too, at that point in time, we weren't sure exactly who was supposed to be authorizing what. You'll recall because MESC said that MESS should do it. MESS said, no, it should be MESC, and we weren't exactly sure. So I remember you'll recall that I said, I'm not exactly sure what I'm asking for tonight, but I think I need your support to move forward with this so that we can build this hybrid plan, knowing full well that we're going to have, you know, we're going to have to likely move to a remote at some point in time this year. I mean, quite frankly, you could even, we could find ourselves in a remote second week of September or third week of September, quite frankly. I mean, that's the reality, right? So we may have to pivot soon. But I'd like, I'd like us to lay it all out and then see what you're thinking, and you can see what our thinking is. And then, um, we would want you to poke holes in it, quite frankly. And we say that with all affection, you know, because it helps us to think everything through. We never mind, um, we never mind getting those emails from parents or, or the questions from you folks because it just helps, helps us to create something better. And, you know, even the memo that I sent out, um, yesterday, or sent out today, you know, we, we ran that past the steering committee. And, um, the last of the memos, that's what we, that's what we've been doing, is sending it to the steering committee to say, have we got this right? Have we captured it right? And everybody, every single person in the steering committee offers some type of input or feedback. And what I love is that by the time that memo goes out, it's been run by all of those people. Every one of them has had, and I've, I've been able to incorporate every one of their suggestions every single time. And so you have a much stronger document that goes out to your parents. And so we see the same thing, the same, the same approach with this. So with that, then, um, can we get started then? And again, Todd, I'm not sure whether it's you or Alita that's doing this.
Alita's going to put in share her screen.
Okay. Awesome. And Alita, just while you're putting it up there, I'll go through it pretty quickly because I think we want to spend the most amount of time on the questions because we make the assumption that the school committee has read everything. Great, so we're just going to scroll down, um, just go to the first page there if you can, please. And we'll move beyond that, too, because it's just a table of contents. Thanks. I think one of the things that we want to stress here is those four components there, the supporting the safety, health, and wellbeing of students and stuff, the establishing and rebuilding connections among staff and students. I know that we've spoken with all of you about how important we feel that is, especially for the hybrid model with our youngest students coming in, um, that we feel that that's really critical for rebuilding connections. And the engaging and, and active student-centered learning experiences, whether that's asynchronous, whether it's synchronous, whether it's onsite. Um, so I think that we think that that's all super important. And of course, the fostering joy and learning is something that consistently drives our efforts. Um, we'll just have you go through this. Uh, you can go ahead and scroll down, Alita. Thanks, you can just leave it up. Um, we'll just have you go through this. Uh, you can go ahead and scroll down, Alita. Thanks. You can just leave it. Yeah. Yep, keep going. Now, the safety and the, the social emotional learning and connections, um, you're going to hear Todd talk a little bit further on that because you, you'll hear that the two completely different things, but intertwining. There, there's the, the safety, I think, um, a physical safety that you'll, you'll hear us talk about again tonight. And, and Rob certainly here as we talk through, uh, you know, what we're doing in our buildings. But then there's that, that emotional safety and the, the, the emotional learning that has to happen in the connections. And I think Todd will spend a few minutes here talking tonight, tonight about what we see as our Wednesdays. Um, and we'll, we'll put a little bit more focus on that, um, as we go through and head towards the, the charts. So if you can keep scrolling, Alita, please. Yep, keep going right down. We're going to aim towards the charts. Great, thanks. So just stop there. The full in-person model, um, of course, uh, there are very few, and, and getting fewer by the day of school districts that are looking at the full in-person model. Um, as I was saying earlier, uh, uh, some, some of the districts that thought that they could do it are finding out that they can't do it. Um, just as primarily as a result of the guidance that's come through the, from the state. Um, and, and I think that there's a more pressure right now to say that it just doesn't feel safe right now. And it's not lost on us that there's an uptick in the state, and so I think we're all concerned about that and are watching that uptick very, very closely. The full remote model is something that I think, um, across the state, I think that if you were to ask superintendents, I think that we all believe that we will be in the full remote model at some point in time during the course of the year. I think our goal always is to aim towards that full in-person model, but we're not so sure that we're going to get there in this, this particular school year. The hybrid model presents a lot of, uh, positive things. And again, especially for our younger students, uh, so that they can, you know, acclimate back into schools and, and feel like part of the, that larger community. Um, so we're, we're still really encouraging that. And I think that you're seeing, as the commissioner said, that hybrid model coming uh, between hybrid and full remote in about 90% of our school districts across the state right now. Um, but as I was saying earlier, I know, um, that there's, there's a site out there that is, um, a group that's monitoring that. Right now, to my knowledge, there is no, uh, and I know Amy and I talked about this, I don't know of any official um, site right now that, that's with one of our state organizations, for example, that's monitoring that. Uh, but it would certainly be a good thing to be monitoring so that, that everybody knows what's happening. I do think too, you're going to find out in the next four to five days, I think you're going to see a lot of school districts because most of us were planning on having our comprehensive plan in on Monday. So you're going to see a lot of school districts that are lining up right now to have their school communities, um, approve their plans in the next couple of days. So I think we'll have a very good sense of where the state is at, as, as a state, probably around Thursday or Friday of next week. The Remote Learning Academy is kind of a bit of an offshoot, and Todd will speak to that, um, a- as well in a minute. And, um, can explain how that ties in with the, the hybrid model and why that's a, that's an important, um, part of, of our efforts as well. Maybe Todd, do you want to speak to either of those right now?
Sure. So a couple of things, I know Brooke, when we spoke earlier, just to kind of give kind of a general overview, um, you spoke to how, you know, this is not the final plan. This is, you know, an overview, so it has more broad sweeping, some more broad sweeping generalizations in it. The final comprehensive plan that you'll get on Sunday is, is double the length of this. And we finished that up this morning. Um, so it's going to have a lot more specificity as it relates to lots of different things around health and safety and around facilities, but also around, you know, all of the models that, um, we've been charged with creating. So, um, when you get that final plan, you'll see the level of specificity in that, and I can certainly speak to it tonight. Um, we were told in the commissioner meeting this morning that we would be getting feedback on the preliminary, preliminary models that I had sent in back a week ago Friday, and you all got a copy of that. We did just get that feedback tonight to identify the important components that need to be completed in our comprehensive, um, model. And I'm happy to report that, you know, all of those components are in our comprehensive plan that you'll receive over the weekend.
So we feel very comfortable and confident with that plan moving forward.
Um, Brooke spoke to the four goals at the beginning of this. Um, but there's also some talk certainly around the rationale for the schedule when we came to you with the hybrid model. We certainly thought, thought it very, very important for all students to be getting in their building every week. So similar to the Boston Public Schools model and several other hybrid models that are out there, we chose the Cohort A and the Cohort B. Cohort A in on Mondays and Tuesdays so that they'd have all day synchronous learning with their teachers. Um, and then on Thursday and Friday, they'd be more in the asynchronous, um, learning with some synchronous check-ins. That, those Wednesdays are, have been built so that all students can be remote, but also be working synchronously with their teachers. And there's going to be a heavy focus on the social emotional learning component there. You know, each school certainly has its own identity and its own flavor, um, from advisory to student groups, to student, um, advisory groups, et cetera. Uh, but we've built in the Wednesdays to be a blended learning day of syn- of synchronous and asynchronous activities that really unite the entire district and all of our students, um, in one consistent learning opportunity on Wednesday. We're really focused on blended learning, and that's a mix of synchronous and asynchronous learning. Just like during a school day, you know, a, a teacher does not stand up and give, um, you know, direct instruction um, for an entire 50-minute period. Oftentimes, there's a 20-minute direct instruction followed by asynchronous learning um, that students are involved in, whether it be group learning or independent learning. So we've really worked to, to blend that learning. Um, and then in terms of the remote learning, um, option, I can actually speak to, um, what a full remote learning model would look like. Where all students were going to meet daily for synchronous learning experiences. If they're in the full remote learning model, those would be those students who opt not out of the hybrid and stay at home. Synchronous learning would begin at the start of a typical school day and be offered at intervals throughout the day. A portion of each day would also be dedicated to asynchronous learning as well, where students take what they have learned and apply it to certain activities. So in synchronous remote learning, students are participating in many lessons that address new content and offer the opportunity for guided practice with their teachers. Literacy specialists, math specialists, special educators, even EL teachers, counselors and related service providers can also provide opportunities for small group instruction support. In synchronous learning opportunities would be scheduled within a typical and consistent school day timeframe for our remote learners. Um, there'd also be independent remote learning too, where they engage in structured asynchronous activities. Then teachers are considering balance with screen time and planning practice and assignments. That's also a huge consideration. Um, the feedback we received from surveys from parents were to really balance that screen time. So that's why we have that blended learning option. Students can utilize all of the tools that support learning asynchronously through collaboration and communication. Uh, teachers will require completion times for all activities. And as appropriate, students can also be supported and taught by various educators, um, in buildings. So in the comprehensive plan, you'll see how the daily structured learning time for synchronous and asynchronous um, learning opportunities is mapped out. That will be in the comprehensive plan as well. But the Remote Learning Academy is specifically designed to respond to the needs of those students who are not yet able to return to in-person schooling. Those are, those are students who are thriving in remote learning environments and prefer non-traditional school experience and may wish to consider that option. So this option is available to students who are unable to return, um, to school in the fall. And it will require a period of commitment from families as students move through the curriculum. So we'll talk about the specific, um, structures that we have for that at the elementary and middle levels, and what we're now thinking about in terms of remote learning for the high school, I think, um, a little bit later, unless you want me to talk about, or you want to talk about that now, Brooke?
No, I don't, I want the high school part.
Okay.
Uh, Alita, can you just continue to scroll through, please? There you go. Just, yes, just keep going. A lot of this is what Todd had just summarized. Just stop there for a minute. Just, yeah, thanks. Todd, can you just quickly go through the chart?
Uh, I'll go. Sure. So as I mentioned, we're, we're working on cohorts. Um, next week, we'll, principals will begin to divide students into cohorts when, once we get survey um, feedback from families in terms of what they are opting for. So until we find out from families, you know, after they read through our comprehensive plan, they can then make a determination on what they're most comfortable with. From there, our principals and our building administrators can build those cohort groups. So Cohort A will be in-person in school on Monday and Tuesday. That will consist of a tremendous amount of synchronous live instruction face-to-face with their peers as well as their teachers. And then on, um, Thursday and Friday, Cohort B will experience the same thing. Um, Cohort A on Thursday and Friday will have more independent, um, from home with a synchronous check-in with teachers. And Cohort B would just be experiencing that on Monday and Tuesday. And then Wednesday allows, as I mentioned, for that mix of synchronous and independent learning from home with a strong focus on social emotional learning resources, bringing community, the community together. And it's that one day where the entire school, um, and the entire district can be working on one consistent um, priority as built by, um, the district on that day. So there's a strong focus on SEL, social emotional learning, on those Wednesdays that allow remote learners and hybrid learners to be in one cohesive community.
I was going to say, and I think it was important for us too, that we want to make sure that whether children were on a remote plan or a hybrid plan, that this was their opportunity to feel like they were part of our school community. So the Wednesdays to us are really important days. Thanks. Alita, can you, uh, scroll, continue to scroll down, please? And Todd went through all of this, so we'll just keep scrolling. Can we just, uh, just stop for one second on the learn, uh, Remote Learning Academy? Because this is a question that's come up, and, and I would want parents to know what we're looking at for this because, um, some of the questions come up about the notion of will the teach, will the teachers be the same, you know, for my child? And, um, no, not necessarily. Like, uh, the, the Remote Learning Academies, we're actually looking at doing something, um, a little bit more u- unique on that, especially for elementary and, and middle. Uh, do you want to speak to, just a bit to that right now, Todd?
Um, you, you mean the, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Sure. Well, the Remote Learning Academies.
At different levels?
Yeah, at the, just the elementary and middle. I mean, we're, and how we're looking at manning that.
Yeah, so we're looking at, you know, manning that at the elementary and middle school levels because we have, you know, a number of staff in the building who are, you know, who can work in sort of, um, a remote learning academy structured team. So it would be those kinds of teachers who would be working with those students, um, who are remote. Um, and so we're also, um, have created a variety of resources for remote instruction and assessment, such as Screencastify and EdPuzzle and Edge Elastic, Lexia for our K through five students, ST Math for our K through eight students, and IXL for our grades three through eight students. And within the, the comprehensive plan, there'll be a full list and link to all of the resources that we've been able to obtain um, for, for remote learning. Um, so our principals are working, you know, creating those schedules and making sure that those students who are remote are working with teachers in their specific building so that they're part of that personalized community, and same with our middle school teachers as well.
Middle school teachers may not be from the same building though necessarily, because at the, the middle school level, we're looking more at the, you know, uh, certification and special, uh, specialization. So I'm not sure that the elementary and middle will end up being identical. They won't necessarily mirror each other. So we can expect some differences with that. Uh, can you, can you keep going, please, Alita? Yeah, we'll keep going. Just stop there for a minute. Um, you know, we, we want to just bring up homeschooling. It's not because it's something that we necessarily encourage, but I, you know, we know that that's an option for folks. And so, uh, we just want to make sure that parents are aware that they can still do that if they're looking at that as a, uh, an opportunity for their children for the new school year. But it, we prefer to keep our, our students in-house, uh, for sure. But we know that homeschooling sometimes is the best option for certain children and certain families. We're very supportive and very respectful of that. Can you keep going, please, Alita? Just stop for one second, just, uh, if you can. Uh, one of the things that came up there is just a, a full, uh, person learning model with precautions. I, just for our school committee's purposes only, um, I did receive a number of emails from families that felt that we, uh, we could do full return with no precautions. So I think we just want to be respectful of the fact that not everybody is thinking that the, the road, the road that we're necessarily going down is the right road. Because we certainly do have families in our community right now that feel that we should just be doing a full return with absolutely no precautions. So I just want to make sure that I put that out there, that we were, we respect, um, we respect your opinions on that, even though it's not the route that we're likely to take, but we're certainly respectful of those opinions.
Brooke, I think it's important also to just put out, you know, put out there that we did do a feasibility study, and we did go with all of our administrators and Rob and Lisa through buildings to determine in terms of spacing, you know, what was possible and what was not possible. And that's information in the plan that we had to turn in last Friday, that we had to give to the state to let them know that, you know, at three-foot distance, you know, what's possible and that, and that that's not going to work for our district. But at what's, at six-foot distance, what, what might, and that, which is why, part of the reason why we landed in this hybrid place. So we had to give them that data last week that they do have.
And, and I'm really glad you brought that up because another part of this too, and this was relatively new last week, week and a half, is that I believe Kathy and I will have to sign off on a sheet at the very end of all this, once the decision is made, saying that we will abide basically by the DESE guidelines. So I, so I just want to put that out there for those families that would prefer for us not to go back with any, um, precautions. Okay, Alita? Uh, we, just to stop there just for a second, just, just to note again, um, i- if you haven't been following us previously, um, and, and I'm going to kind of speak, Jonah, if I say, if I get something in, as I know you'll, you'll correct me. But, um, we really do see special education kind of traveling down its own pathway right now. And whatever, um, model that is that the district takes, uh, we see, um, our, our social education population populating that model, whatever, whatever it is. But they're, they're kind of, they have their own sets of criteria right now that are very specific. They're, they're own pathways. Um, so it's how we tie, uh, how we tie those two, those two pathways together right now. But, um, I, I know that Joan's doing an outstanding job with her staff too here as we try to work through all of this. And again, at a time that just doesn't feel, um, like a normal time. Okay, Alita? Uh, let's stop with the technology. Um, and maybe, Todd, do you want to speak to technology just briefly here?
Sure. So we've done a lot of work with, you know, technology and working with Suchi and his department. Uh, we mentioned earlier that we secured 192 extra Chromebook devices for our grades three to five students. So that grades three through 12, we, every, every student has access to a Chromebook. We know our K through two students don't work at Chromebooks, so, um, we're working on, you know, making sure that iPad loaners, et cetera, would be available for our younger students. Um, people also know that there's a major backlog and back order of Chromebooks across the country right now. Um, thankfully, we have, um, a very, um, astute technology director. And he's put that order in for, uh, Chromebooks for our sixth and ninth graders, as we've mentioned, because they'll be getting new Chromebooks as they enter the new school year. And so that, those are set to arrive by the end of the month, and we're hoping and praying that they do arrive. Um, if for some reason they are a little bit late though, we still have the devices that the seniors turned in upon graduating. And we have other devices that can certainly replenish that until they do arrive and are ready to go. Uh, but we've been assured in terms of technology and devices that we will be, we will be equipped. Um, in terms of resources, um, you know, we prioritize through the ESAR grant that we got. Um, that we have, as, and I mentioned these resources just briefly before, you know, we've been able to gain, um, access to Screencastify and EdPuzzle and Lexia and IXL for math and a variety of online resources, um, that our teachers know and know well. We will also be providing more professional development with those resources in the 10 days prior to the start of school. Um, so we can make sure to that teachers and students are able to use those programs and use them well. So in terms of technology, technology tools, the technology department is also currently doing, um, kind of, kind of a feasibility study on our bandwidth and what we need to make sure that, you know, we are able to, um, meet in two-way communication through Google Meet. We're also talking about also making sure that we have Zoom available. So we have two platforms for two-way communication. Um, so we took a lot of feedback from the spring in terms of what more, what more do we need? Um, and so he's currently working on those things right now to make sure that we are pretty sound with the tools that we have um, for technology in the district. Should we be in, you know, hybrid and or full? hybrid and/or full remote mode.
The thing that we would want to point out too with the Zoom is Zoom still has problems, the platform still has problems appropriately running on certain Chromebooks, and so we know that Zoom is working on that. So, you know, I know that some folks think, well, everybody can just use Zoom, but, well, actually, it doesn't work on all Chromebooks, and it doesn't work on a bunch of our Chromebooks. So that's something that we're working on as well. And she and his team are just working overtime right now, not just the feasibility study, but they're also looking at repurposing Chromebooks on carts and getting them ready for, as loaners, and, you know, just basically getting a Plan A and a Plan B. So they're in the middle of that process, which is just enormous right now. Alita, can you keep going, please?
Hey, Brooke, as astute as our administrative team is, I'm just getting texted now that a shipment of Chromebooks arrived today. So I like that we have those. Who are either a part of this meeting or watching from home and checking us on our accuracy of information, so that was information we didn't have, so that's good.
Awesome, thank you for letting us know. Okay, you can probably speak to the PD just quickly here too, Todd.
Yeah, so this is really important, and it's interesting. Our administrative team is currently participating in a SEL seminar workshop series, and yesterday was the first of those workshop series. They're going to be taking place for 90 minutes every Tuesday until, for the next three Tuesdays. So it was a really good, almost trauma-informed day one on how to work with students who are dealing with anxiety, depression, trauma in their lives, and that's going to be a series all of our administrators are going through, so then we can then provide that kind of SEL professional development and the same kind of PD to our teachers when they come back those first 10 days. Our teaching and learning team has a small SEL leadership team as part of it, and so they're working on resources and providing PD sessions within those 10 days. We're also working on a social justice task force that's also creating a vision and prioritizing as well. And then in terms of professional development for curriculum, we're working on providing PD for CSO, which works very well in the spring, and we had upped that program so that we had full access for all parents and students, Google Classrooms for grades three through 12, and then we've got other web-based resources such as Screencastify, which allows teachers to record lessons and send them out, EdPuzzle and Flipgrid to support teachers to become effective users of digital learning tools. So those are kinds of, the curriculum PD will be offering around SEL, social justice, and then resources, but then we've also put in time into those 10 days to provide professional development for health and safety, as well as what we need to do around facilities, health and nutrition, as well as human resources, so that everybody can be up on safety and facilities use and proper protocols during, you know, a pandemic.
Great, thanks, and we can just scroll through the next couple of things here quickly, Alita? Can I just stop there for a second here? And I'm not sure, I think Lisa, is Lisa on tonight? I'm not sure if Lisa's.
I didn't see her, actually, no.
If she's not here, she'll be here, I believe, on Monday night. Can you just scroll back for a second? Alita, just a little bit more, a little bit more. In terms, right there, thanks. In terms of masks, I just want to point out that I know that MASC, one of the things, again to this parent who said about, you're always waiting for guidance, yes, we just got guidance on our MASC policy, and so that's, we're able to bring that forward, and we'll be looking at doing that, I believe, on Monday night. I think our hope is that we bring that policy, that new policy forward for masks. Masks breaks, just as an FYI, that's one of the things I believe our local task forces are looking at, because those will be different in every building. And so, again, this is where we kind of provide that 30,000 to 50,000-foot view, but the schools will be looking very specifically at those. Alita, if you can keep going down these things. A lot of this, we've already covered in previous meetings about the isolation rooms, and, you know, our nurse leader, Lisa Goldbicky, walked the buildings with Rob Frieswick, and they, you know, very specifically set certain portions of some of our offices aside and created isolation areas and medical holding areas. The PPE, preparedness, I'm going to take that from a different lens. Right now, as a district, we're well-prepared for that, I believe, and Rob can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we have like 62 cases of gowns, for example, right now. A number of plexiglass barriers, you're going to see a number of those too up and around our buildings that have been recently placed, and we've got others on the way. So the next section is on facilities, and I know that we've had a lot of discussion about this, we had Rob come in, and he's here tonight, because we have other questions at the very end, but Rob, I'll just talk through this really quickly. We'd mentioned that we're quite advanced in terms of cleaning of our facilities, and that was purposeful, so that the next week or two, we can start to move our things out to make sure that if we've got extra furniture in room or shelving, that we can move out or whatnot, so that we've got more space for movement for our staff and students. So you'll see all that happening in the next little bit. You can scroll down, Alita? Please, thank you. We've already talked, Rob said, talked extensively about cleaning and disinfecting procedures, and the fact that all of our equipment, or all of our sanitizers, et cetera, fall under the EPA guidance. We'll keep going through. Facilities, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, I'm sure we'll talk about this again this evening and where we're at with that, because I know that's one of the questions. So we'll talk a little bit more when we get to that point in time, and I'm not sure, let's just continue to scroll down there, and we'll see if Rob wants to add anything when we're done. Windows is one of the things too, that has been strongly encouraged, that we continue to keep windows open so that there is a flow of air, and that, I can't remember what guidance that was, that was CDC. And again, we have to remember that these are all things that offer guidance or recommendations. These are not things that tell us we have to do this, these are recommendations or guidance. And we try to, and one of the things that continues to come forward is that you're most successful if you're implementing a myriad of these things, like the three to six-foot distance, and the masks, and the fresh airflow, and the, so we've tried to keep that in the back of our minds as we orchestrated all of this. Can you scroll down, thanks? You're going to see us try to limit our movement in the hallways, that's still problematic, of course, as we talk through, you know, a hybrid model at high school, because it just doesn't work well at a high school. But you'll see our middle schools, for example, have really limited the amount of traveling that our students will do there. Lockers, you're going to see very limited locker use this year. Signage, new signage has already been put up around our buildings as well. You can just keep scrolling through. And I'm not sure, Rob, just say yes or no, is there anything else that you want to add at this point in time, or should we wait for questions for you?
Can wait for questions.
Okay, thanks. Bussing and nutrition, now, Tom, if, you know, I'll go through this as well as the bussing component, and same thing, if you want to just wait for questions, you can do that, or if I'm missing something. So the bussing piece, again, when we talk about guidance that we had to wait for, that bussing was one of those things that we were waiting for the guidance, and that's come through, of course. And if you can imagine that, and I think that we've talked about this before, but it's kind of like drawing a zigzag line on, you know, if you had a, if you could look from the top of a bus down to the seats, really, you know, you'd have one sitting at the window, then one sitting at the aisle, the next one sitting at the window, the next one at the aisle, so that's a kind of a zigzag to how the students have to sit on that. Recall that the guidance again is that masks or face shields are required for all drivers and all passengers on the bus when they're traveling. And again, there you have, again, about the windows necessary to be open to circulate fresh air where feasible. We continue to work very closely with our particular bus company, which is D-Bus, and they've always been excellent to deal with. We still, I think that Todd had mentioned the fact that we're building the students, or the principals are starting to build cohorts of students, they're going to have to work very, very closely with Michelle, because that's going to be our next issue. And so when we send this survey out again next week, we're asking parents, again, have you made it, you know, have you changed your mind, for example, on bussing versus transporting your own children? We really need that as we're building these cohorts to know who we have to transport on the bus or not, because that will potentially affect our arrival and departure times. And you can just scroll through, thank you. I thought, one of the nice things about some of the guidance that was laid out is the responsibility of the various stakeholders that are involved, and so here you've got the responsibilities of the vehicle operators and monitors, just scroll through. There's responsibilities of the managers. Responsibilities of parents and guardians. And I just want to make a mention, no, and you can continue to scroll here, Alita, I think that there's a district. One of the things that we really have to rely heavily on for our, is our parents right now, as we go through this, because we can't do this alone. We need our parents to talk about things, and you can stop at food and nutrition things. We need our parents to talk to the children about the masks and the importance of wearing a mask all day, and that they should only be taking it off during mask breaks, and, you know, all those, or when you're eating, or not sharing food with, you know, your friends and things. So our parents play a pivotal role here in our success for going back, and I know that we're trying so hard to do the right thing to make sure that our children and our staff are safe, but we need parents to help us out too, because we only have the children in those buildings for two days, as we look at those middle and elementary students, and the rest of the time, they're not in our care, so we don't know where they've been, and we don't know who they've been in contact with. So I think we need to keep that in mind, that this has to be, this has to be community efforts here that we're putting forth as we bring our children back. For food, food and nutrition, Tom, I'm going to speak quickly here to just kind of get through everything, hopefully I've covered it okay. Each school will be designating the different eating areas, and that will differ from building to building. I don't think that we are going to be able to keep our children in the classrooms, we see that as being problematic, so you're going to see us try to use some of our cafeteria spaces and hallways. Hand hygiene continues to be critical for us, and you'll see that throughout the buildings and throughout the day. Meals are going to be prepackaged where possible, there's not going to be the open surgery time like there has been in the past. For those students who are on remote learning, but particularly if they've been identified as free and reduced, now, this could change, because it may open up a little bit more, depending on how the year progresses, but right now, if you're on remote learning and you've been identified as somebody who can receive free and reduced meals, we still want you to make sure that you come to the school to pick up the meals, and it's a grab-and-go model, the same as we had this spring, that worked really, really well. Will it just keep going there? As you can imagine, Tom and his team are taking every precaution possible for meal prep and going above and beyond. One of the things we're going to encourage is that children bring their own water, because, you know, we, I think it's just the high school, I think, Rob, has the only touchless fountains, and so we want to make sure that children are bringing their own water bottles from home, because our water bottles are basically going to be turned off. Now, Tom, have I missed anything critical, or can we just wait for questions?
No, that was pretty, pretty good, and I'll gladly wait for questions, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so with that said, that's a broad overview of the plan, so I'd like to, Alita, if you can put us back onto the full screen, and I'd like to just kind of open up some thoughts for Steve, Todd, and I, and I'll start, and then I'm going to kind of turn it over to Todd and Steve, so we've been thinking about high school. The high school is kind of its own, its own little beast, and we say that with all affection, Steve, but it does operate very, very differently than the elementary and middle schools do. You know, you've got 1,000 children in there and all moving around, and there's a lot of activity that happens in it, and there's just a lot more chance for things to be not quite as safe as you would be able to keep them at an elementary and middle school level. Then we also had the issues of the remote learning, as we took a look at trying to build the remote learning academy, we kept coming up against issues there as well, and particularly because, you know, it's easier for us to help adjust at the elementary and middle school levels with staff and having staff come in and help out in different areas. It's not the same thing at the high school, you know, you can't just, even though the state has given us the latitude to have teachers teach in the areas that are not their areas of specialization, just because we can do that doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. And so we've had this discussion, and I'm concerned, and we've spent a lot of time on this, a lot of research on this, we've done a lot of connections with different organizations and different stakeholders in terms of other high schools around the state. And I said to Steve, at the end of the day, you know, and I also had this talk with Kevin Keveney as well, I think our Neshoba parents value, as we do, our Neshoba teachers. And, you know, we've looked at different platforms that we can bring into the high school for third-party vendor, you know, and as a way of helping to support hybrid model, but then it's really not your Neshoba teachers teaching your Neshoba children, it's other organizations, it's other platforms. And, you know, when I look at, you know, Steve and I had this conversation even again today, but it was certainly was the first time we've had it, when I take a look at the high school composition, I know, I know those children in that building, just as Steve does, Steve knows them far better than I do, but certainly over the last four years, I know who's sitting in that grade 12 class, I know who's sitting in the freshman class this year, and you want to do the best thing you can for the learners that you've got in those classes. And I said to Steve, I'm not so sure right now in my heart that I think that a hybrid model is the best model for the high school. And so we're kind of stepping away, this is not necessarily what the state would be supporting, only in terms of the state is asking us what our district is doing. And what I am proposing this evening is that although we are proposing hybrid for elementary and middle school, I would like us to please consider the notion of full remote for our high school. And Steve is going to speak to this, and then Todd can speak to it too, because we've all had so many discussions on this, trying to find our way to find the exact right thing to do for all of our children. And I think it speaks to the fact that, from my lens, I think elementary and middle children, I don't think we have a large window here. I do think we are going to be in full remote, I don't know that, none of us really know that, but I'm worried about the trajectories right now, I'm worried about what we're seeing for trends, I'm worried about the summer, and what we're going to see at the end of summer is people have had time to get together at the beach, or had time to reconnect at family reunions, or whatever that looks like, and I'm worried about what that looks like in the fall. So I'm worried that there won't be a large window here, so to me, it's critical that we get our elementary and middle school children in front of their teachers ASAP. So I'm not wanting to start them in the remote cycle at all, because I think that we will probably end up there. With the high school, I see the issues differently. I worry that if we start in a hybrid model with the high school, and let's say we start with the platforms, because there's no way from my vantage point, and Steve, you can correct me, but I know that we've had this discussion, and I know Mike Talison, and I had some discussion about this late this afternoon as well, that our teachers at the high school are going to be able to do the hybrid model and the remote academy, learning academy at the same time, which is why we were going to look at the third-party vendors to help supplement this. So let's say that we're only in hybrid for two weeks, then what happens? Then, then we've lost any opportunity for our high school children to be really in a plan and in a routine that is set specifically for them with Neshoba teachers. And I said to Kevin Keveney, as I did to both Steve and Mike tonight too, you know, like, we, I go back to the father that had said, said something into us about the three-foot distance and said, "We've never settled for minimum, why are we settling for the minimum now for the three-foot distance?" I think I shared that with you a meeting or two meetings ago, and it really resonated with me. Well, I feel the same way here with this as well. In my time here, we have never said to our principals, "You need to hire a cheap teacher, you need to hire somebody at a school." We have always aimed for the best that we could afford within what seemed like realistic parameters for numbers. And very often, at that high school, for example, it hasn't been a $60,000 or $70,000 teacher, because they come in and they've got the experience, they've got it hasn't been a sixty or seventy thousand dollar teacher because they come in and, and they've got the experience, they've got the specialization. Very often it's chemistry or physics or something like that. And they are the ninety-two thousand dollar teacher that walks in the door. And I'm thinking to myself, as we were reviewing all of these platforms and I'm thinking, why wouldn't we want our kids to be with the best? When we know that the best is sitting in our schools, why are we looking at the platforms? So I know it's a switch. I know it's something for us to look at, uh, through a little bit of a different lens, but we also know that this remote model is going to look dramatically different than we've had in the, the last couple of months, because last couple of months were crisis mode. This is a crisis mode that we're going into. We're looking at this through a very different lens. So for example, attendance has to be taken. Those kids are going to have to be in classes. They're going to have to be on those calls. And you know, the, the grades are going to be much more traditionally kept than they have in the past. You'll recall that we really had to go to a pass fail. Now, there were a whole pile of reasons why that had to happen that were so far outside of any control Neshoba ever had. But those, those things have been taken care of now at the state level. So we're in a much better position that we are able to go back to a more traditional model for marking. So I think that that's also, um, a, a key thing for us here as we're looking at the high school model. So, um, those are some of the things that kind of, uh, we're, we're going around in my mind and, and Steve, I'd love for you to talk about the difference between the hybrid model and the remote model, e- even just the schedule that you've built. Now I will say that Steve is fully ready to go either way. We can do hybrid or we can do full remote at the high school. We are positioned to do either. But maybe talk a little bit about some of your thoughts here, Steve, on this and why you're leaning one way or the other.
I'm also involved in a, in a principal's, a mid-watch principal's group and, and the, the high schools are, are all struggling with this, uh, the whole hybrid situation. Um, I, I think, I think our main, one of our, we've got probably three, three major concerns and, and, and in regard to the safety issues. Um, we're not going to be able to do a cohort similar to like a, a, um, middle school where they keep the students in the same class all the time. For an example would be if a student, a student, one student's in a math class, when the bell rings, there's twenty kids in that class. Those kids are going to twenty different rooms at that point. So it's, because we have so many classes, so many offerings, um, and with electives is over two hundred classes. The students are, are spreading out throughout the building, which makes it very difficult to, with, with passing time and, and the crowds in the hallways. Um, we've, we've, we've up with some plans for that, but they're not, they're not, I'm not real confident in those plans. I'm not real confident safety wise that they, they would work. In, in regard to community and connections that the students have, the, the hybrid kind of, uh, the hybrid kind of divides the community because we've got, we've got classes set up where we're going to put um, half the class in there on, on Mondays and Tuesdays, and then the other half of the class on Thursdays and Fridays. And, and they, they wouldn't really get to be amongst each other, whereas in a more remote mode, they would, they would all be in that class together, um, which is important. And they'd, they'd be able to be around one another. And within the, within the, um, communities, we, we, we're, we're hopeful that in a, in a remote mode, we'd be able to build, um, more community with, with freshmen. We've got those first ten days. We're looking at trying to bring, uh, kind of a, a new, a new Neshoba day. In bringing twenty, twenty freshmen at a time, just to so they get, they can do what we normally do with the new chieftain day type of thing. Academically, the, the teachers are only seeing the students in, in the hybrid, um, about one and a half days, one and a half periods per, per, per week. With, within the remote mode, they would, they would actually have, um, instruction for four and a half periods of weeks. They'd have much more interaction with the students at that point. Um, and the students have been out of school for six months, uh, and, and we, we really have to try to get them back onto some, under some sort of a schedule. And, and with the remote learning, we're try, we would try to, um, make sure that they had a, 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 a good schedule. I, we, we've even talked about looking at different times to start, start the day because the adolescent brain starts later and there's all kinds of science towards that. So, so we've talked about that kind of thing. The adolescent brain need, needs structure to focus it. And, and the hybrid, with the hybrid model, it, 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 it makes that difficult to do because they are kind of spread out and, and not, not working as a cohesive unit. I think the safety issue is the biggest one though. I, I, I just don't know that we can, I don't know that we can, we can be as safe as, as the other schools can be in regards to the, to the hybrid model. Many of the schools at Leamont High School and, and Watchus, uh, they've, they've gone all remote. We, we could do hybrid. We could make it work. It's just going to be super difficult and I'm not sure it's going to be safe for all, for all the kids at that point.
Okay, that's, that's terrific, Steve. Thank you.
If I just one, one more thing, Brooke, I'm sorry. For, for the high school kids, they're, they're going to, they're going to, they, um, they don't listen to us a lot. So it's going to be very difficult to, to get them to understand masks and whatnot. Um, it's going to be hard for the APs and the teachers and everybody to get them to follow the, the, the COVID police and make sure they're going to do it, what they're saying they're going to do. If we could start in that hybrid m- model, hybrid mode, I, I think that we would be able to get them back on track.
Remote mode, not hybrid.
Right, right, correct. Remote mode. We'd be able to get them back on track in, going to classes. And then we could kind of explain to them what the hybrid mode is going to look like once we go, once we finally go into that. So they would have more, more of an understanding. Going into this hybrid on the first day of school, these guys are going to come in and we're going to have to try to teach them that. And, and, and you know, with four hundred kids, it's not something that, that's going to be done very easily. So that, that, those are my thoughts on that. I, I, and, and we could do either one, but I, I, I'm, I, I really think the remote one would, would make more sense for the high school.
And I think, uh, uh, Steve, too, just final thought, you, you know, when we've talked about this, you've talked about the fact that you see us moving just the opposite to the elementary and middle schools. You see us going from a remote model to a hybrid model ultimately, you know, whereas in, in my, I, I think from my lens, from the elementary and middle schools, I see us starting in a hybrid. But I see us going quickly to a, uh, you know, a, a remote mode. You know, one of the things, uh, one of the questions I know that had come up is, well, you know, would you, would you do a reevaluation? And, and I thought, well, you know, my first reaction is we'll be reevaluating it all the time. I mean, you know, where Lisa watches those numbers daily. She watches our local numbers. She watches our regional numbers and she watches our state numbers and ties it in with the, the feds. And, um, so I think that, uh, between Lisa, our Neshoba Boards of Health, you know, our Massachusetts Department of Public Health, they're the ones really that will, um, will help to guide us. And by the way, again, back to the guidelines that we have to wait for, um, uh, for that parent, I would point out that we were told, I, I think, Todd, I think we're getting the new guidelines for that within the next couple of days. Because I think they're actually going to tell us, uh, what the metrics are that they're expecting for us from the DESE in terms of when you can move in and out of the different models. Would that be a good thing to say? Todd, any thoughts that you want to add with regards to, do we miss anything on the, the high school?
Well, you know, this is, this is the hardest part. Um, you know, I met with Steve and his team, um, you know, in terms of brainstorming around, um, you know, the difficulties that exist with doing this, when there are just so many specializations of courses at the high school. You know, we have teachers who don't, you know, who teach chemistry or teachers who teach, you know, a specific, a specific calculus. And that's really hard obviously to do when you're in a hybrid model. The other thing that came up and certainly in talking with a variety of other districts, because we've reached out to so many. They're all, you know, struggling with the same kinds of issues. But again, when we reach out to parents and the feedback we get from parents is that it seems like their biggest need and their biggest want is that synchronous one-on-one learning with the teacher. And so a potential remote learning model does allow every student at the high school to connect with each teacher almost every day. So ver- versus having a virtual platform that we're working with and having, you know, some teachers help with that. You know, the remote model will at least allow everyone to connect with and build those relationships on, on a daily basis. So I think that was the, you know, the biggest thing that, you know, biggest aha that came out of that.
Would be something that we, that I would, if, if you, um, if you would support our thinking in this, I would uh, reach out to the commissioner tomorrow and say that this is what our thinking is. Because it would be breaking the district off into two different models rather than a single model for all schools. Um, yes, Todd?
No, I was just going to say, and as a parent of a, of an upcoming ninth grader, it's a hard thing for me to even come to in terms of an aha moment, because the last thing I want is my daughter to be in continued remote. Because she's been in remote for, for six months. But I also know that, you know, her ability to potentially connect with each of her teachers on a daily basis versus only twice a week or not even, um, is better than. So I say that with, you know, I certainly understand, um, you know, the, the issue that is there for that level.
You know, one of the things Steve and I talked about too tonight was those teacher, or those students who are struggling learners. And we just felt that if we do this model, you know, and I, you know, we had to agree to disagree on some things, because I, I said something and Steve said, I totally disagree with that, as we had some rich discussion on this, you know? But his thinking was spot on. And I, because I said, I, I'm worried about our marginal, our, our learners that are, um, having marginal learning experiences right now. And how can we best support them? You know, what can we do to make it better? And so, we ultimately landed, we felt that this was probably going to be the best model for all of them. So.
Steve, um, Steve has his hand up, Brooke.
And even wi- within the remote model, I, I, and Brooke said it, uh, that when we were doing remote learning in, in the spring, it was, it was crisis learning. It was crisis teaching and, and it, it's going to be far different than that now. And I, I've heard people say the, the remote learning was terrible in the spring. It was terrible in the spring. We were doing the best that we could. The teachers were, the students were. And it wasn't anything like what it's going to look like now. And we're, we're putting together content based lessons for the, for the remote learning. There's going to be grades, there's going to be attendance. So that, that's, that's much different. And I, I'm not sure everybody really understands that, that well.
The other thing that I want to put on the table too is that, um, for remote learning, even if we go to remote learning, right now, the expectation from the commissioner and the expectation for all superintendents across the state is that teachers will be doing with their remote learning from their buildings, from their classrooms. So at this point in time, that, that's the expectations. Not that they would be at home doing, uh, remote learning from home, but that they would be in the buildings. So I just want to make sure that I put that on my table too.
And, and also with, with some of our students that were struggling with remote learning in the spring, we didn't have any real way to get in touch with them. Where, where, if the teachers are in the building, we can, we can reach out to some of those folks and, and, and give them an opportunity to come into the building. So we can help them to get them back on track with, with, with students that are reluctant learners or students that are struggling with, with, um, head plans or anything like that. We'll, we'll have people there and the technology will be able to, if there's any technical, technological glitches, they won't have to try to call somebody. We'll be there in the building where we can get those things taken care of right there and then.
And some of the conversation that we had this afternoon too, they, you know, with having all of the high school teachers onsite, will also provide them the opportunity for more collegial, um, sharing and, um, planning and that kind of thing. So we, we kind of see that as a win-win and a situation that just sometimes often feels like lose, lose for us. So, so that's kind of where we've landed with the high school. So I'm wondering if we can just, yes?
Brooke, I just, just procedurally, um, we reviewed the, the preliminary plan and then we were going to go over some questions.
Right.
Um, in terms of the proposal for the high school, do you want us to, um, you, you want a sense of, of where the committee is at this point in time? Or do we want to push it off? Think about it and have the discussion on Monday. What, what do you want?
I think I would, I think I would like a little bit of both, to be honest. And it's not just like having your cake and eating it too. Um, I, I think that if there are some, um, I think I'd like to kind of go through the questions to make sure, because I think that there are some questions here that are high school oriented that maybe people will think a little bit differently now as we go through them. So I'd kind of like to go through the questions and then come circle back and say, okay, now is there anything else specific to any of these areas? And, and then maybe at the end of the, as we come in closer to the end of the meeting, you can say, yeah, where, where do we sit here now with, with the notion of the high school?
Okay, that sounds good. Okay.
Okay, so I think the, the first, um, Todd, just the, you know, and Kathy, the first, uh, group of questions that I pulled up are the most recent ones. So Mike, these are not the ones that you had alluded to, um, in your, these are the ones that kind of came up earlier and, in, in some cases there are answers, in other cases there are no answers and, and, um, and others we may have to get back to because we just don't have the guidance or we just don't know at this point in time. So I'm just going to go through question to my question and Todd, if it's, if it's something that you want to answer or it, it, I don't know if there's many there, Tom, for you. Rob, there might be one or two though for you. Just, uh, feel free to, to chime in.
To be clear, we had the committee had put together a document and the title was questions for eight, six. Is that the one you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll read the question and then we'll go through the answers. So the question is, um, will we have a, a policy protocol for students who are non-compliant regarding, uh, wearing a mask? And again, this, this is a hard one. And this is where we really need our parents to help us out as much as teachers. And, and I think, you know, as, uh, Steve said, it, it's pretty tough to ask our, our teachers as well to take on the role of being COVID police on top of everything else. So we really need our parents to help support us in this area. At this point in time, you know, we see very few students in a position to not wear them. And the thinking is every, everybody, all teachers, all students will be wearing them. So um, I don't know that we need a policy or protocol at this point in time, Kathy, for it. But let's just see what we're up against and then we may have to do something. Will the district have a policy regarding mask breaks? I think, Joel, you might want to speak to that from a principal's lens because, and, and talk about what the, the principals are having, uh, for discussion, uh, regarding mask breaks.
Yep. Thank you. So Superintendent Clutchy mentioned that, um, there are overarching, uh, concepts for mask breaks from the DPH and our work with Lisa, but the task force, task forces are taking that up as well. That it was an issue that we discussed, uh, and are working through just, uh, yesterday. Not in terms of procedures, that's kind of outlined in, in what you've read already, but in terms of what it looks like in each school at each level from, from an early childhood to a, uh, upper elementary to a middle level.
Great, thank you. Um, of the jobs that the superintendent said may be eliminated if we switch to a remote model, and I, I will talk about that. The notion of how many of those positions can we redeploy, um, can be, buses be used to deliver lunches to our children, uh, particularly the free and reduced population? Uh, will these jobs be eliminated, eliminated even if we switch to a remote model? After the school year starts? So that, you've got a couple of different questions in there. So one of the things, um, that of course is just a reality is that if we go to a full remote model, then there will be a number of positions within the school district that there just won't be work for some, some people. They're just, they're just, that's just a reality. It's not a threat, it's just a reality. So, um, you know, for example, if we, if the school district was to be full remote, then you don't have any buses that are running. You don't have any, you know, with the exception of your, the sped bands that would be running and such, the general buses won't be running. And so, um, you know, that, there'll be some of that, that's going to be, um, potentially lost. If you're not feeding one hundred percent of your students, then you either redeploy some of your staff or you have to let some of your staff go. If you're, all of your buildings, and again, I'm talking full remote, and then I'll come back to this specific question. If you're not using all of your buildings all the time because you're in full remote, then you don't need a full-time custodial staff, for example, either. And so there's a lot of things like that that we have to think about. Extended learning, uh, our extended day right now, I, I would tell you, we are doing some rethinking on that. I'll probably speak to that Monday night. A lot of districts are really rethinking, uh, extended day programs right now, especially for the start of the year. So I won't speak as much to that tonight, but I will, I will touch base on it on Monday. With what we're looking at doing with the notion of, um, just one building going to potential full remote, that wouldn't be the same situation that we would find ourselves up and, up against. And I would tell you that we are still looking at, uh, doing a redeployment of staff more than, um, elimination of, of staff positions, um, at this point in time. Because we're still going to need help with the remote learning academy as an example. And so you're still going to need bodies that can help for check-ins and, um, some of the synchronous learning activities that we have. Even for those Wednesdays and, and what we envision for those Wednesdays, we're probably going to need all of the stuff that we've got right now. So, uh, full remote versus what we're looking at doing very different things. Buses delivering meals, that's something that we had looked at in, in even the summertime, but the truth was we, we didn't have that many meals to deliver. And so we, it was something we considered, something we had looked into, but the need ultimately wasn't there. It, it, it has and it was, has been and it was in other school districts, but not in Neshoba. Will the jobs be eliminated if we switch to a remote metal, model after the school year starts? I think that what you saw at the end of last year, um, in a crisis mode where none of us saw that coming, I, I think that was an exception to the, to the rule. I think that this time around, I think that you would see things, um, very different. So for example, if the work isn't there, then the work is not there to do, then the job is not there for, uh, for that position. So it's a very, it's very different. So it's a very, it's very different this, this particular time. Can we decide to vote on a phased approach with hybrid learning until Thanksgiving, then reevaluate? My first reaction when I saw that question is that Thanksgiving is too late. We'll be, we'll be evaluating this, I'm suggesting to you almost on a day-to-day basis. Because we see changes right now, and you know, Kathy and I have had this conversation a number of times, when you just take a look at the last two to three weeks, and we're still that many weeks away from the start of the school year. So I, I think Kathy didn't go from one point, was it one point?
One point six was the lowest and today I think it was 2.2 or 2.1.
Yeah.
And it's been trending in the 2.1 for the last week.
So, so I, I think that I, I don't have any intention of waiting until Thanksgiving. I think we'll continue to monitor much more frequently than that. Can we do another survey of the parent population to see if parents' opinions have changed with new information? And that's one of the reasons why we're sending out the, another survey next week. And quite frankly, and I think I've said this before, I think parents are still going to want to have the possibility of changing their voice or their opinion, I, I can see as close to this, as close as possible to the start date. I think you're going to see that happen. And so in my world, what I'd love to say, hey, make the decision by, I don't know, pick a date, September 1st? Absolutely, that would make our lives a million times easier, easier. But the reality is, I think with things so fluid in our lives right now, I think that would be foolhardy to pick a date and say, make a decision by this point in time. So I think we will continue to be fluid with the situation and, and do the things that we need to do. Will each elementary classroom be provided with an aid to support elementary students with remote learning? I, I don't know whether either Joel or Todd would like to join in on that and respond to that. Whoever can take that question.
I, I can. Okay. Yep, so every grade level, there's, there's an instructional assistant at every grade level. So I, I think that you would see the synchronous teaching be a combination of the classroom teachers and the instructional assistants. So, so the short answer to that question is, is yes, for now.
The next question, at Florence Sawyer where there's no air conditioning, and please know that we've had this discussion a million times over, the fifth, sixth and seventh and eighth grade classrooms on the second floor, and, and the notion about a heat index, please know that we've had this discussion a number of times and, you know, when, in previous times, if we could take the students down to the auditorium, for example, that's what we would do. This is a little bit different and so the question was, you know, was asked, you know, is it something that you can think about with regards to heat days? And I would say, yes, that's absolutely in the mix for discussion right now. We haven't made any decisions on that, but know that we are having lots of discussion on that because that, those, I know what it's like, I mean, Joel, I know what it's like when you're on that second floor and, you know, everyone is just pouring sweat. Now, how many times have we had like ice cold waters and bottles or wet towels up there and all that kind of thing? But, yeah, Joel.
I will say that, you know, that, and I view it as a prudent decision to move back to the 16th of September, in our case is really a gift, that we don't have that many oppressive days after the middle of September. So, you know, we, we are looking currently at, you know, outdoor options, it wouldn't certainly be a daily thing, but, you know, we will look at available spaces. And I know that it's something that the logistics working group in our task force is, is working on.
Terrific, thank you. The next one, does the district have outdoor tents for each school's use? And the answer to that right now is no. We had this discussion at our last meeting actually, but for those that weren't involved in that, each tent right now, and I know that Rob and I talked about this last time, each tent for us to purchase, for us to rent, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, $25,000 for three months. And we would have to buy one for each, each school, not buy, but rent one for each school and the cost is just really prohibitive. So, and that's if we could get them, because right now they're being used in other ways not linked to schools at all. So right now, do we expect that we will have any tents? No, likely not. The next question, will our Remote Learning Academy teachers be teaching remotely or from the classrooms? I think we've answered that. Will DESE, MESS, or MESSS offer procedures or policy suggestions for districts and schools when a student or staff member, et cetera, tests positive for COVID? Yes, you heard us say earlier, Todd and I say earlier, that we're expecting guidance at any minute. The, the DESE, the commissioner has told us that DESE will release metrics that they have worked with, they're, they've had a team of doctors and medical officials who have helped them to create these metrics. And so we're just awaiting those and that, that will guide us. Who or which organization is providing public health guidance to the school about COVID infection and what would trigger the full remote model? Again, that, that calls back to Lisa Goldbicky and the Board of Health, as it did last time and the public, the Massachusetts Public Board of Health as well. And then we also work with them and the DES, and us as well, and you'll recall it, and we were in March when we'd made, when I made the decisions to, to do the closure for Neshoba, I had reached out immediately to our legislators as well to make sure, and the DES to make sure that I had support to do that. We would take the same sort of approach with this as well, but those, all of those organizations offer us guidance, so we would, we would look to that. For classrooms without working sinks, will hand sanitizer be sufficient for washing hands when soap and water is not available? I, I think, Rob, maybe you can just chime in, do we have many, many rooms without working sinks? And if we do, is the hand sanitizer available?
Any classroom, it's mostly at the elementary level, most of the classrooms have sinks in them that, you know, that are working and will have soap for the kids to wash their hands. The older grade levels, you know, they typically don't have the sinks in the classrooms and every classroom in the district will have a hand sanitizer station in them with a minimum of 62% alcohol-based hand sanitizer, up to I think 71%.
Thank you. Rob, this is a question for you as well, the next one. If we can't retrofit the building systems to achieve a MERV 13 rating, can we use portable HEPA filters in each classroom, looking to increase air exchange rates and exhaust rate? So let's just quickly chat about where we're at with that.
Sure, we've, we've looked into the HEPA filters, you know, there's a lot of them online, you know, the Amazon platforms and stuff like that. One thing you got to keep in mind is how many square feet each one of those units covers. And, you know, the smaller units will cover 300 to 500 square foot, but most of our classrooms range from, you know, 700 to, you know, just over 1,000 square feet. So you'd have to find the appropriate unit to, to, you know, treat that space. We did purchase some for the isolation rooms in the nurses suites and that will cover up to 500 square feet. There are other models that cover up to 1,500 square feet, but the price tag on those is just around $600. And, you know, it might be a small disruption, I'm not sure how noisy they're going to be. And plus, you know, we're going to need upwards of 300 of them, you know, to outfit the entire district.
I'm just thinking too, Rob, we, we might want to talk about, we want to thank a dad who I know wants to remain anonymous for providing us with some, for some free support right now as he helps us to look, to look at our systems and see if there's something that he can do to help guide us. So we want to send out a special thank you to Cam, I know that you communicated with him this afternoon. So thank you to that dad. We're also looking into, not looking into, we're in the process of securing some additional support to come and help us as well with somebody with an area of specialization in, within this field, so they can tell us what we can and as we cannot do. So we've got those, those things happening, kind of running parallel right now. Rob, this next one too is for you. What is each building's HVAC capacity for the MERV filter rating and recycling of the air, just the ability to refresh the air? Can you speak to that, please?
Yep, that's, that's one of the things that, you know, you know, an engineer is going to have to come in and go through all that. You know, with the buildings ranging, you know, that are over 20 years old, trying to figure out what each unit vent's capacity or rooftop unit's capacity is, you know, it's going to take an engineer to figure all that out. They're going to need some specialty equipment to measure the CFM coming in the building. We don't have a lot of monitoring equipment as far as CFMs go, so they're going to have to bring in some specialized equipment to do that, you know, and then work out all those calculations to, to see exactly what the refresh rates are in certain areas, classrooms, you know, and all the, you know, the bigger equipment that we have in the buildings.
Rob, somebody asked, has the new HVAC condenser been installed at HALE?
No, the condensers have not been installed yet. Those, the Samsung system that is at HALE is discontinued, so those compressors are special order and they're made, you know, by a third-party company, so those haven't been manufactured yet. We don't have a lead time, everything is, you know, so slow because of, you know, the pandemic, things are taking a lot longer to get. The system is running on, the Samsung system that is there now has three rooftop units. Four of those compressors have already been replaced, so the system is up and running. It's just, we don't want to run it like that for long or long periods of time to put added stress on those four condensers that, that are, you know, that are working right now.
Thank you. The next question, is it possible to have a dashboard for each town similar to the one displayed by the state? Would also be good to see the longitudinal information since March. I think Lisa's not here, but she was certainly doing the homework on that, so I think that she'll probably present that information Monday night. Next one, I thought the ESE guidance dictated that the district provide PPE for staff, but the new MESS policy in these covering these staff do their own, what's the mandate and/or what is Neshoba's policy? Basically, what we, we were told by the DES, by the commissioner, is that everybody should be bringing their own masks to school. Now, with that said though, we have, we have a supply, so we have a supply for children and we have supply for staff, so that if they don't have one, and Rob, I'll turn it over to you here in a second, if they don't have one, we, we have some to supply. Rob, do you want to jump on that too?
Yeah, with the DES guidelines that came out on June 10th, those guidelines stated that there was one mask per student per week and five masks per staff members per week, which we have secured and they are in, you know, onsite at this time.
Yeah, thank you so much for getting on that early in the game when all of that information came out to Rob. And this one also is another Lisa question too, and this is, and I saw the same article, it says, I saw this Tuesday morning, it shouldn't be left to school districts to do on their own, but with regards to tracking cases and tracing and such, and then the Shova Board of Health seems like it might not have the manpower to do this in a timely manner. You're absolutely right and it really shouldn't be left to the districts to do it on their own. I would agree with that too. So when Lisa comes on Monday night, she can touch base on that and her perspective, what she sees happening with their. What will a full-time remote option look like? And Todd, I'm going to turn this over to you. Will there be more responsibility or instead how to manage it?
Yeah, and I, I went through the remote options earlier and what that will look like, so it certainly will look like, look differently at the different levels, especially what we just spoke to in regarding the high school. So in terms of more responsibilities for parents to manage it, particularly at the upper grades, no. And with the remote academy option, you know, we're certainly going to have a group of teachers who are responsible for teaching those students within that remote learning model. So I identify what, what that will look like at each level, but in terms of more responsibility on parents to manage it, there'll be groups of teachers working with those students to help them manage it. And I certainly know that those teachers would be in contact with parents, you know, should students either, you know, have poor attendance or they need extra help, et cetera.
The next one, Todd, is for you too. Will full-time remote students have repeat remote instructions, repeat the remote curriculum with cohort A and then again with cohort B, or will it be, will it be tailored differently?
It would be, it would be tailored differently just simply because those kids aren't in either one of those cohorts, but those teachers in the remote model would be working with those teachers that are teaching in cohort A and cohort B for those students who are coming in. So it would be very similar experiences, so there'd be no repeat instruction.
Joan, the next one, I think really is more for you. What types of services simply cannot be provided remotely, even in a full remote scenario? Will some students need to come into the buildings for, for some reasons?
So I think about some of our high need students that really need direct services or our youngest learners for preschool. I can't imagine doing a Google Meet to provide particular services, that would be much better done in person. So we are trying to create some time slots during the day that if parents select remote, that they could come in for an itinerant service to get that direct service that's prescribed in the IEP.
Right, thank you. If we, if we offer a hybrid or remote learning model, when will families need to decide when, and their decisions be binding? And will families have the ability to request a change under certain conditions? Again, I think we're going to have to really play this by ear because I can see a myriad of different cases being out there. I can see, you know, all kinds of different reasons why families might need to change mid-course to, to go to either full remote or try to come back into a hybrid model or whatever. So I think that as a school district, I think we have to be really, really flexible at this point in time, or as our commissioner would say, we have to be nimble with all of this and I would, I would agree with him. If we're in a hybrid model, have we established which baseline metrics we would be using that would downgrade us to remote? And I think that we've answered that as well, that really, you're going to see that come through with the DES guidance that we get and with Lisa working with our Neshoba boards of how. Once in a remote model or hybrid model, what, what baselines would we use that would push us up? And the same, it's the same thing, right? It doesn't matter whether we go, if we're in a hybrid and we go to a full remote or a hybrid and we go to full return, those, those metrics have not been given to us yet, but we are expecting them at any point in time. If high school electives aren't offered in a hybrid or remote, so Steve, this is going to be you, if high school electives aren't offered in a hybrid or remote model, will we be changing graduation requirements to allow seniors to graduate if they aren't able to take courses that they had planned to?
We're hoping to run all the electives, just like, just like they've been scheduled as much as possible.
Todd, this is probably for you.
I'm just going to go back, I'm going to go back to that one because that question did come up to the commissioner in terms of those students who opt for and take electives for credit. And so that was certainly, his response was, we will get back to you in terms of, particularly at the high school level, if there needs to be some sort of reprieve given to classes that you just cannot offer, given health-related, so they're going to come back at us with more specificity on that.
And we, we've worked with, we've worked with some of the elective teachers to, to, to adjust classes to make them work remotely and in a hybrid mode. So I'm, I'm very confident we can still give most of those courses.
Again, I want to point out that I've said this before, but I think some of our arts teachers are the most creative people I've ever met and I, I have complete faith that they will come to some sort of nice resolution of what their courses will look like. Todd, this is, this is I think more for you, for full remote learning, how many hours a day will be synchronous? I think you actually touched on this already.
Yeah, I, in the comprehensive plan, we've identified elementary remote learning would take place from 8:30 to 3:15, just like normal traditional hours, with longer blocks for literacy and math instruction. For middle and high school remote, 7:45 to 2:15, and again, similar. And then Wednesday would look the same times for those levels, but be more focused around a balance of synchronous and asynchronous learning around the SEL, kind of community focus there. But the DESI and the state have put forth, you know, the hours per day that we should be focused on and those are in the comprehensive plan that you'll see ranging between five to six hours of, of learning. And so there will be a balance of both of those synchronous and asynchronous during each of those days. So I'd say between 2.5 to three, you know, synchronous hours, given what they've put out as their recommendation.
Todd, the next one's really for you as well. For full remote, which details will be prescribed and which will be left to teacher autonomy? Amount of timing of synchronous lessons, will assignments be aligned across sections as in the spring, et cetera?
There's going to, you know, we're, we're doing a tremendous amount of work, you know, creating consistency. So I would say, you know, there'd be less teacher autonomy and more of a, you know, consistent method across the district, which is why, you know, we've got our humanities lead and our math lead really taking a look at prioritizing those standards and working with teachers. Really taking a look at prioritizing those standards and working with teachers for consistent processes across the district. I mean, certainly all teachers have, you know, their own, their own poetic license in the classroom. But in terms of, you know, how we meet the standards and, you know, those lessons and those standards that we're trying to meet. There certainly will be consistency across the district at grade level and within each discipline.
Model of remote days are meant to preview and reinforce material. How can teachers cover a full curriculum as required by D E S E? Todd, that's really you too.
It's a great, it's certainly a great question. It has come up a number of times in our meetings with the commissioner. The expectation is that we are hitting all of the standards that are prescribed in the state frameworks. Um, however, you know, districts are really looking at really prioritizing those standards and what, you know, what we consider to be. Priority, especially when kids are in, in synchronous learning. I'll say that question has come up a number of times because there are concerns around it. Given the state that we're in and the response every time has been the priority is to hit all standards. It's a great question.
Um, the last question has been answered. Um, I'm going to go to the next question. Uh, what happens if things get better and the family is comfortable returning to normal program via hybrid or full-time? Uh, do they then go back into the, uh, the assigned classroom? I think we're not quite there yet for that, but I, I would say, Todd, unless you want to weigh in on that, I think that, uh. I don't think that we have that thought through thoroughly at this point in time because that's really not the, the space that we're in.
Yeah, we, I mean, we haven't gotten that far. I mean, we certainly want to prioritize, you know, the needs of, of families and the needs of students, but. Um, just given where we are, we, we, we haven't gotten that far yet. Till we figure out where kids, where families want to start first.
Uh, the, the next is a kindergarten question. Will kindergarten have a different plan than the rest of the district? Um, potentially, yes, we're not sure just yet. As I said, I spoke to earlier, uh, we'll, we'll have a much better idea next week about that. The state noted in its June guidelines that K to one recommends, uh, or requires to wear masks at school. Uh, not like grades two to five, will center require K to one to wear masks? And that's one, we've said this at the last meeting, that that's one of the things that we're looking at doing is putting it, uh, so that masks are mandatory. And, uh, in Neshova Regional District, uh, for K to twelve. Um. The next one, Todd, is for you. With hybrid in-school learning for the two-day, uh, two days.
I think you missed the one before.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. You're right. Thank you. So you're all on there. So you can all tell me why you missed it. Thank you. With full remote learning for K to five, will kids have two days of live instruction and then two days of assignments? Um, it was, you know, or will there be, um, live classroom via Zoom, et cetera? So Todd, do you want to speak to that? So you already had the answer, that's why you.
Uh, uh, great question. And then you, when the comprehensive model comes out. They'll see that the schedule for the week for full remote learning K to five has them doing a blend of synchronous and asynchronous every single day. So there'll be that balance every day. So it's different from the hybrid where they would be in for two days. And that, you know, doing more synchronous learning and then out for two days later in the week. Um, the remote learning, uh, allows them a balance, um, all five days.
With the hybrid in-school learning for the two, uh, for the two days, a group will be learning from home during the week. Is it possible to record lessons by the teacher and uploading them to a portal instead of just uploading assignments? I think that's really what the question is.
Yeah, so we have, we, we've, we've purchased technology that allows teachers to do that. And we'll be providing professional development. The, the platform that they love the most is called Screencastify. Um, and lots of teachers at the middle and high school levels use it a lot. I mean, simply because they've had the more experience with the one-to-one Chromebook initiative. Uh, but we'll be providing professional development on that and how to, you know, create lessons and then upload them for, for students to watch and participate in.
Uh, the next question we, uh, we answered, uh, when, will the school to schools with a typical day will look like upon arrival to center school? Upon time of departure, um, walk straight to class, have lesson, your pod, et cetera. Again, that's, uh, that, you'll get more information, uh, within the next couple of weeks from your school, your specific schools. Rather than, um, than us, uh, putting that information out. And the other thing I want to re- remind folks is that each school has its own task force working at it right now. Made up of teachers, administrators and parents that belong to that community. Um, so feel free to reach out to any of those. And I'm thinking of the center school. I bet you they could tell you an answer, uh, right away on that where, because they're working through that information right now. Will K to be required to sit at desk six feet apart during the whole day, a school day? Or are they going to be allowed to interact with their teacher cohorts besides at recess? I don't know, Joel, if that's maybe one for, for you to take.
Sure. Uh, so will K to two be required to sit at desk six feet apart? Yeah, all students will be at least a minimum of six feet apart in, in their cohorts. Um, during the whole school day, we, we will build in, uh, breaks as the superintendent and assistant superintendent detailed. Um, mask breaks, uh, we're looking at a number of, uh, to be conscious of, of this and, and little ones. And, and big ones for that matter, um, being in one spot at one time. To move them as a, uh, you know, a micro cohort, if you will, uh, as a, a section. To, um, an area for lunch, for example, or for physical education. I know the superintendent, um, voiced our strong feelings about have, you know, giving kids an opportunity to be active. Throughout the day and, and to have those breaks built in. So, so no, they wouldn't be sitting at their desks.
This is great, that.
Non-stop.
Uh, forty, uh, forty-seven, question forty-seven, we've kind of answered the, the first little bit, but the last part. Uh, this past spring, the school used flipgrid to thwart informal communications among the students and teachers. Would they participate in anything like that with their usual classmates? Not sure if that's a Todd or a Joel question, but the first one.
Flipgrid is very, very popular, um, and we'll, and we will be providing professional development, um, for. Teachers, uh, on that as well. So it worked well in the spring. Um, would they participate in anything like that with their usual classmates? I don't think we've gotten that far yet because we've determined that remote students at the elementary. In middle school will be working with a different group of teachers. Um, but it's certainly something that we can think about and I'm sure, and I know principals would be up for, you know, thinking about that, especially on those Wednesdays. When we're bringing the entire community together.
Next one, Joel, this is really for you. How will middle school differ from the previous year specifically in regards to how students typically move around? Uh, in the different classrooms and are with different students throughout the day? Are there plans for the incoming sixth graders to get a tour, et cetera?
Yeah. Uh, so, uh, I'll take the second part first. We're, we're looking at, uh, opportunities to get. Um, so our, the sixth graders at Florence Sawyer School are familiar with the rooms in the classroom because it's all one building. Uh, I can't speak to, uh, Principal Friend or Principal Grady's plans, but I, I would imagine that. That that might be part of the, the process that their task forces are working through. Uh, the second part, how will it differ? Well, um, um, Mr. Grady and Mrs. Friend and I have been working on calibrating schedules. And we call it a virtual bunker and we spend a lot of time in it. And so there will be a lot of ways in which middle school looks different than a typical, um, uh, model. Uh, and the main idea is one of our overarching philosophies that we want our students. To have as small a footprint as possible as a group. So, um. So that they're, they would eat lunch together. Um, they would, uh, go to recess together in a specific area. Um, they would, um. They would not mix in, in small, uh, pods from one class to another, uh, for that purpose.
Uh, the next, thank you. And Lisa, welcome. Uh, the next one, um, how will specials be handled? Now, this might be more specific to the school, so I'm not sure that this is really one that we can deal with, uh, but Joel, it, you might be able to speak to it.
I can answer it.
At Hale, all students wish, uh, the share of their health music art teacher, will this model continue?
Sure. So, um, again, the, Mrs. Friend and Mr. Grady and I have, have worked. Very closely, uh, together over the last several weeks. And what we're looking at is knowing that we have a five-day schedule versus a six-day schedule. And a, uh, two-day in-person and three-day, uh, remote cohort model. We, um, we will look at a trimester option for six specials for middle school. To have access to, uh, those related arts, but, um. Two, uh, i- in the in-person days, two related arts, uh, during that week. And then in the following trimester, the next two, and then the following trimester, the next two. So you would get a full year of instruction and it breaks down, uh, hours-wise the same way. So each day would have, uh, essentially a double block of a related arts class, um. For, for each class.
Uh, number, question number fifty, um, I think I've answered the first two that are related to lunches about eating in the cafeteria and classrooms. But Tom or Joel, if you, if you want to weigh in, is a plan, what are the plans for lunch? Will they eat in the cafeteria or classrooms? I have one child that has food allergies, so I'm trying to envision what protocols, uh, she'll need to follow. So I don't know, Tom or Joel, one of you can take that.
I. Go ahead, Joel, and then I can follow up.
All right, well, I, I just, um, I think the, I think the logistics are similar across all of the schools. But Florence Sawyer's cafeteria will have individual desks. And, um, those desks will be set up, uh, a, a minimum of six feet apart. And then sections of those desks will be set up ten feet away from other sections. So again, that, that overarching idea of keeping the micro cohort small. They would sit as a class together at those desks, six feet apart. But ten feet away from the next section of, of kids. Um. And, and we've set up our schedules in lunch. Um, we would also use additional areas that wouldn't just be the cafeteria so that we could keep that, that footprint of students small. But there would be, um, uh, time for the, um, for the cleaning to happen between lunches. That because there's, there's the cleaning time, that the actual cleaning time, and then there's dwell time that has to happen so that the, um. So that the sanitizing, uh, takes effect.
Tom, anything to add?
Yeah, we, we still have to, um, keep certain spots available for our allergy, uh, students. Or our allergy-aware, uh, tables, uh, that way, that, that's a, a state law. So there will be certain areas that will be available for students who are able to, um. Not have, uh, greatest concern as if they were, uh, being requested to eat at a table with, uh, somebody who may not have allergies. Although, um, everybody's going to be six feet apart, so.
Thanks, Todd. So I know that I answered you that I didn't think that there were a lot of questions for you, but these questions came in after. So Joel, here's another one for you. In terms of school supplies for younger students in the elementary schools, would there be an option? Whoops, no, I missed one. Somebody didn't say I missed one. I believe I read that locker use is being discouraged. How will this affect the school supply list at the middle school level? Uh, last year we had a lot of finders and it was just too much to fit into one backpack all at once.
Yep, uh, so it's for all of our parents watching, there's a reason why you, for the most part, have not gotten school supply lists yet. And that's because we're still working through this. Um, we are going to try and limit, uh, if not completely ban. Um, access to lockers because it, it sort of violates that overarching principle of not mixing students together. Um, what that looks like is, uh, up to the individual task forces at each of the schools. Um, you know, it might be a backpack procedure and consequently that would limit the, the amount of supplies. We, um, we did get additional guidance on, uh, materials and, and, you know, we want each student to have their own supplies. And limit the amount of sharing to the degree that we can, um, as Superintendent Clancy has already talked about.
Um, the next one is for elementary schools, but I think Joel, I think it's one for you too. In terms of school supplies for younger students in the elementary schools, will there be an option for parents to purchase additional workbooks for home? For example, I know it may be cost prohibitive to purchase the math books, but the writing journals they could use that are typically supplied, supplied by the school. Might be reasonable. This way if a child forgets something, they are out of luck.
Yeah, I'll give you an honest answer and say we haven't worked through that yet.
Yeah, thank you. Um, if I decide to pick the hybrid option for my son, but within two to three weeks, I realize that the three-day remote, um, are not working for us. Can I quickly change to the remote academy option full-time? Um, probably Todd, that would be you to, to take that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I think that you addressed, I think it was asked earlier and, you know, we had, you know, there was a lot to figure out in terms of once we get the cohorts. Moving, but similar to what I said the last time, I think we want to certainly make sure that we, you know. Uh, hear all families' needs and students' needs and, you know, would certainly be able to work with families if they felt the change was necessary.
The next question has already been touched on, uh, tonight, and I think that, uh, there'll be more answers on that one. The comprehensive plan is out there and they can see the, the, the clear options there. If you go with full online, uh, learning for the high school, would there be any sports or other clubs? Um, Steve, do you want to speak to that? I know that we've had a little bit of discussion on that as well.
Yeah, the, the M I A is working through, um, some of those issues, um, Ms. Rich is, is, um. Is very much involved with the M I A and they've got the same issues that everybody else has. They're not sure what's happening, but they're putting a plan together and, and I believe she's going to. Present something to you shortly, Ms. Brooke.
Yeah. If we go full remote at the high school, could we use some of the space to bring some of our youngest learners back? Um, we're, we're not there right now. I think we have to decide, we have to make a decision Monday night of where we're at. And then we can, uh, broaden that thinking a little bit, uh, further thereafter. Can you clarify the difference between full remote and remote learning academy? Todd, you can take that. That's a, that's.
Yeah, so full, full remote speaks to, you know, K through twelve and what a full remote learning model is. And that would be a balance of synchronous and asynchronous learning, you know, all five days of the week with the Wednesdays being that consistent focus in the entire district. Remote learning academy really speaks to K to five and then six to eight. In terms of what that would look like, but similar, very similar schedule, but those academies are really building specific. With students from the same school, working with the same groups of teachers in that building. Because we know then at the high school level, remote learning looks very different as we outlined tonight.
Um, Mike, I'm going, this is Mike Kors, I'm going back to the questions now on the other list and, and just to make sure that we've talked, oh, sorry, Joel, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Brooke, before you do that, if I could just go back to the question that I, I, uh, passed on last time. I didn't read through it, uh, all the way. Um, so the, the question just, if a child forgets something, are they out of luck? We, we usually get a percentage of materials beyond what we would need. So I, I wouldn't be worried about a child not having materials if they needed it.
Um, so on the other questions, Mike, that, that came in on the older list, I'm just going through. Um, question number eighty was answered, number eighty-one was answered. Uh, number eighty-four, um, Joel, you might be able to take this one. Aren't you glad that you were the representative of the principals tonight?
I'm always happy to be here.
Can we clarify, uh, sorry, i- if in a hybrid situation, will kids be placed with one friend?
So, um. Initially, when we, um, looked at the, um. The, the way that we were developing the cohorts across the district alphabetically, um, that could. You know, that could potentially cause a problem in terms of who ends up with whom in each class. Um, I, I mean, I, I feel pretty confident representing my colleagues to say we would do our best to try and. Uh, you know, work through those situations. Um, and, and certainly I, I know. I've received emails and have responded to them as, and I'm sure my colleagues have in, in. You know, around those, those questions of, you know, my, my child has a best friend or my child has a, a, a learning partner. Or, uh, you know, and it, it might come down to a, a question of. Just whatever those social arrangements, those, those social bubbles look like in terms of the, um. You know, the, the daycare options. Um, it's, it, it is something that we're thinking about. I, I just, I don't want, I want to be cautious and, and not say absolutely everyone will have the friend that they want to have in their class. Because there are so many factors that we just, um, don't know yet. I, we don't know who's coming back and who isn't. We don't know how many will be in cohort A versus cohort B. And, um, I, I guess the best answer I can give is we will, we will certainly try as we always do in the placement process to consider all factors.
Thanks. At least the next one is for you and Todd. Um, I certainly I can answer, but I think you guys are the best aligned here. How is our district communicating with our families, including those who speak another language? Or have special health risks or use transportation, uh, provided by the district?
In terms of, um, another language, um, we certainly have our, we have a translation services when we send out memos and we send, we have our buildings send. Um, those out to the families who've identified that they needed translated. And also, you know, when we put out things in Google Docs, there's all, there's an immediate trans. And also, you know, when we put out things in Google Docs, there's all, there's an immediate translate button at the top of a Google Doc as well as in our emails that we send out, which can translate it for them should they need it. But we do have specific translators and translation services for any specific need for a specific individual and can meet that request.
Thanks, Lisa, with the health risks.
So as far as the health risks, we, again, we are looking at translating those things in our documents as well to um, send out to families. Um, can you repeat the question again for me?
Sure, how is our district communicating with our families, uh, like for example, with those who have special health risks?
Yeah, so those that, and always um, the ones that we already know that have health risk, um, we are communicating that with families as well as we always have um, in that language that's appropriate for them, especially when we talk to um, individual healthcare plans. Um, we will translate um, for them as well to make sure that they're on the same page as us.
Thanks, Lisa, one of the questions that was earlier, uh, just prior to you coming on was an idea of where we're sitting at with COVID in our three communities. Can you touch base on that, please?
Yeah, we're, we're still, and, and I apologize for my lateness. Um, I, we are still, we are still very low compared to other districts. Um, we're, we maintain less than that five percent um, of our communities. So um, without specific numbers, we're around eleven, eighteen and six, depending on which town we're in. Um, and that is still very low for us considering um, the cohorts that happen within other districts. So we're, um, I was on a local Board of Health um, conference this morning and um, we are still on the low end compared to other districts. So we are in good standing when it comes to that. We are not seeing any clusters that are um, picking up um, within our, within Lancaster, so.
Thanks, I'm going to take the next question. Um, have we reached out to community facilities, libraries, uh, safety building, community centers to see if there are opportunities for additional classroom spaces? I think at this point in time, we have, we have not done that. And one of the reasons we've not done that is because we have control over our spaces. We're able to, uh, we have our staff, we do all the cleaning and sanitizing and all that kind of the thing with our chemicals and we're able to ma- monitor that. So um, I think that uh, at this point in time, the, the, the interest is not there to branch out beyond our buildings at this point in time. We, we would, we would want to stay within our own buildings. Number ninety, we've already answered. Um, number ninety-two, we've answered as well. Number four, how, we've kind, we've touched on it, but how will lower grades function? So this is really Joel, probably more for you. How will the lower grades function in a hybrid model when so much of the learning that goes on there is based on social interactions, peer association and cooperative learning? And before Joel or Todd respond to this, again, we want to stress these are not normal times. And so, you know, things that we would normally do for this kind of interaction are just not going to be available. Um, and so we, we, we would put that out on the table and say that right at the outset. Uh, Joel and Todd, thoughts on that?
Todd?
Yeah, I mean, I know we've talked a lot about it, um, you know, we, and even the number of emails we got when um, the state said, you know, can you do three foot distancing? And we got a lot of people saying like, you know, that wouldn't necessarily cut it. I know we've certainly talked about one-on-one instruction between teacher and student if they were masks on. But we've also, you know, really just talked about, given the Board of Health um, guidelines, that it's going to be very hard to do that kind of cooperative learning, group learning, uh, given the circumstances that we're in.
Joel, anything else or no?
Well, I would just, I would just say that, you know, um, recognizing that the high school is, is a completely different um, institution and level. I, I thought there were a lot of things that worked really well with remote learning and remote learning one point O. And so the idea of remote learning two point O and all of the lessons that we've taken from that just sort of validates the um, deep appreciation I have for our teachers and the hard work that they put into. Given enough lead time, making things work for kids. Will it be, you know, exactly the way that it would be if we were all in person? Probably not, but I, I, I am convinced that they will um, look through that social emotional lens. And uh, and I'm grateful for all of our task forces have working groups a- around the social emotional components to deal with these very issues, to, you know, to, to make the, to front load so much of the time with our, our learners, all of our learners to make um, our school under the conditions uh, and our school district that we have to abide by a welcoming um, you know, learning positive place.
Thanks, and when I take a look at the last question, I, we've pretty much answered that as well. And Lisa, while you're here too, because it really goes to the notion of the fact that we are expecting metrics within the next week or so from um, the D E S E regarding how we move in and out between models, between uh, full remote and, and full return, for example. Do you have anything else to report on that right now, other than we know that D E S E has said that? But are, have any of the boards of health that you sit on or are involved with, um, have anything else to offer?
No, not at this point, they are, they're, um, it's been very quiet, um, which was surprising because they moved over from school stuff on, on D P H um, the last um, Tuesday afternoons. And Billy, the focus was um, on public E, was the, was the last discussion. So not much on schools at this point. Um, I'm expecting more um, Friday morning.
Okay, thanks. And Kathy, I think that is one hundred percent of the questions that came in that we have right now. That doesn't mean we don't have further questions, but that, those are the questions right now. Kathy, you're, you're muted.
Leah was trying to tell me, maybe not. Um, so um, those are the questions that were submitted by school committee members. And also um, I think the bulk of them were submitted by parents. And um, there are uh, many, many people watching um, close to the three, the two fifty, the last time I checked. So I know people were interested in those things and, and there, many people are. Um, so um, the other, I don't think there's anything that we have to decide on tonight. But we do want to circle back to the information that was presented by the, about the high school. And so let me see what Leah's question is, and then I would like to um, uh, check in with the committee and see where they are with regard to that. Leah?
Hi, guys, so um, I'm not totally sure what happened, but I didn't, none of my questions were on that list.
Were they added to the, to the, to the um, the, the document that I shared that said questions for eight point six?
I think that I just emailed them to you. I'm not sure why I mixed that signal.
I, I, I apologize, I don't remember getting questions from you, Leah, because any questions I got from anybody, I just cut and paste them to that list. So my apologies, but if you want to forward them to Brooke um, and Todd and C C me, maybe we could look at that. I, I don't know what happened, but um.
Do you want me, is there an opportunity for us to continue asking a couple more questions now?
Well, I want to get to the height, is there any question that you have that is totally different than the ones that have been asked?
They are, you know me.
How many do you have?
Um, so I have a few that are still relevant from the other day, but I also have new ones based upon the new high school conversation.
Okay, well, we haven't had that conversation yet. So if you want to pick your top two of the other ones and ask them.
Oh, that's hard, okay.
Well, I never said it was going to be easy when you signed up for this gig, you know? Top two, and then send the rest, go ahead.
So I think that the most relevant one um, that I just really need you guys to share with the community and, and with me too, is what is the rationale behind, in the hybrid system, not letting kids zoom in or Google Meet in and kind of observe so that all five days can be new learning and the kids will just rotate through the classroom?
So I, there's a couple of things, uh, for, I'm going to start with that and then Todd, Joel, if you want to weigh in. A couple of things that you need to kind of keep in the back of mind. First of all, the, the whole Zoom thing, we're still working on that piece, but with the Chromebooks. And I had alluded to that right at the very beginning as we were working through that because the Chromebooks don't um, operate really well with Zoom. Uh, Google Meet is still a platform that we really like, and I think we've done some upgrading. I think Google, Google has done some upgrading on that, if memory serves me right. And so I think that we feel in a better position for Google Meet for sure. The other thing that you need to keep in mind is the whole live streaming is its own issue. And you know, if you see something on, on Facebook, for example, which, you know, there's always stuff on Facebook and uh, but versus what I receive from emails. So for example, um, you know, I received an email from a parent the other day that said, um, it, it, I, I don't want to share the whole contents of the email, but it was, it was heart, it would, it just tugged at your heartstrings. And, and it was just so worried that their daughter would be identified as being, pick whatever, you know, uh, whatever identification you want to have. Um, and they were very uncomfortable with that and they didn't want that child involved in any way, shape or form and any type of live streaming. And so then you're really looking and say, so if, if we're going to livestream, then, then there's a whole new set of rules that are going to have to be played by because there are a lot of parents in spite, I mean, it's one thing to say, hey, just livestream. It's another thing when you're involving people's children and they don't want their children livestreamed. So that's one thing. The other piece would be that this is going to be um, a part of impact bargaining, quite frankly. Because the teachers' union will have, will have their own lines of thinking uh, for a multitude of reasons. And all good, valuable rationale is to, to what some of the issues could potentially be with that too. So I think that there's, and, and I'm, I'm glad you brought that because it gives me the opportunity to say, as much as we've got all this work done and we're all ready to go, um, at the end of it, we still have negotiations that we need to move into next week. And that could, that could have some different effects in, in a multitude of areas. So we still, we still have um, still have challenges in front of us. So even though we've done all this work, doesn't mean that it's, it's all ready to go, we still have some challenges ahead of us. So I'm not sure if that, so Todd, I'm not sure if I've mentioned everything or Joel, if there's anything else that you think I can mention or Joan?
Yes, I would just, I'm sorry, Todd.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, we've had lots of conversations with technology um, to livestream every, I mean, our buildings do not remotely have the capacity and or bandwidth to hold that kind of, uh, and so Chi right now is doing the homework on what that would cost um, to be able to have that kind of capacity if teachers are obviously in the buildings. And then every single teacher in every single room is doing two-way communication. The upgrade right now to the district buildings for bandwidth, et cetera. He hasn't given us the numbers yet, but is uh, astronomical. And as uh, Superintendent mentioned, just in terms of um, teachers, if they've got, you know, their normal classroom of students in front of them and to then be responsible for those who are, who are, could be potentially livestreaming in, that certainly would take a more professional development in terms of what that would look like and how to do that with the new technologies associated with that. But there is certainly a, you know, a technological aspect to that, um, that we just don't have the capacity right now, but we are looking into it for sure.
So you can see there's, there's a multitude of layers to, to this, yeah. Joel, did we miss anything or Joan?
I, I guess I would just add that a- aside from the contractual and, and technical um, hurdles, um, I, I, I just wonder if there aren't pedagogical um, concerns as well in being able to um, you know, model a lesson, deliver a lesson, work through the, the struggles while you're trying to do that with, with, with half of your class that may or may not be, you know, actively engaged through the remote learning. It's, it's certainly something that, I'm not saying that we can't, I'm just, I'm wondering if there are pedagogical concerns on top of it.
Jonas, is there anything you'd add to that?
I guess the thing, I, I would add a couple of things is like, when I think about kids livestreaming in, how do they, do they get some of the questions they have answered in the moment when you have ten or twelve kids in front of you and maybe ten or twelve livestream? And how do we provide kind of that support for those students in the moment for that teaching? So I, I do worry about that. I think the other piece, Brooke, that you've already mentioned is we do have parents that have some real concerns about how do we provide instructional support in that setting and will that kind of um, trigger some kids, you know, awareness around other kids' disabilities and then livestreaming into people's houses? So I think there are some concerns that have been brought forth to me around that as well.
One more question, Leah?
Yes, so I have figured out how to blend it all, or rather, round it all down. Um, so my, my second question is, and it's kind of related to the concept of uh, remote learning versus hybrid. So I know that all the, you know, three hundred and fifty-two municipalities are man, are trying to figure this out and a lot of them are going full remote. So I guess my question is this, and it's two parts. So if.
One question.
It is one question. So if middle, if high school has so much kind of movement and um, change from classroom to classroom, doesn't the middle school also have that problem? Or will our middle schoolers be back to an elementary model where they're just with one group of kids for every class?
So that's a great question, and I know that Joel's got. Okay, Joel's, Joel will have an answer for you on that, so, because the high, the middle school principals have worked really hard on this. So part B?
Okay, so then part B is, as we try to move toward hybrid with K to eight, I am very concerned about quarantining, that's already happening across the southern states. And so what we could find ourselves doing is if a teacher is part of a contract trace and they need to be quarantined, then the teacher is actually going to be the one at home and the children are going to be in the school, but you still have a remote learning happening. Um, and the teacher could be um, removed for fourteen days and possibly do teaching while they're at home, hopefully. They could be actually sick and you've mentioned nothing about substitute teachers and things of that sort. And so it's boggling my mind on how we are going to manage that pedagogical concern when the teachers are being booted out of the school in large numbers and so many other kids are going to be impacted by that.
So Joel, why don't you take the easy part?
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have an answer for part B.
But, but the part A, you can do the part A.
So, so Leah, could you go through part A again, please?
Yeah, so like when my, so I think that what middle schoolers love about middle school is that their math class, they have Joe and Bob. And then in their science class, they get to see Emily and Nico, right? Like they mix, kind of like high school does, but not quite as intense.
Right.
So is that not going to happen?
No, not, not to start. But I think the, the fact that, you know, you're, in the middle school model, the teams work so closely together that um, I, we, we have collectively about six different iterations of schedules that um, we, we want to be nimble uh, to, to use the superintendent's phrase. And, and I think, you know, it, it won't be easy to, um, well, it'll be, if we needed to, and we were able to come back in a full in-person, uh, that could happen where, where we could replace the students by sections or pods. But, you know, we've used as this overarching principle of keeping that, that micro cohort as small as possible. And that just, that gets in the way uh, of us being able to mix students throughout the day with different classes.
So we'll be more like an elementary model?
No, they would have all of their teachers, no, they would have.
The third, the, you know, whatever, twelve kids they move with, well, they'll all go to science together, they'll all go to math together.
I, I will answer that question with the words I answer every question lately, for now.
Okay.
Um, and, and um,
I think it's safe to just leave it at that, just for now, because that, again, and Leah, to your question too, you know, and it's interesting because I, I am seeing um, other educational groupings right now, um, starting to feel this, the type of experience that you're describing with staff that aren't able to. We're, for now, I'll take Joel's example, for now, we are not in that position. But I will also go back against it, we recognize that we're going to have to be nimble. We don't, we don't know what's coming, we don't, there's, there are so many what ifs in front of us. So we can only control what we can control right now. And if, I mean, if, for example, we, we had an outbreak, I, I don't know, in Lancaster schools and, and uh, let's say ten of our staff were out, we would be closing it down like right away. Like, I mean, you just, you can't operate, you know, and, and uh, so I think. You just, you can't operate, you know, and and, uh, so I think that I I would would say like everything we do, the common sense bar. Has got to be a play. So.
So I think that just what I'm questioning.
Leah, yeah, so I I'm, we're at almost eight thirty. And I'd like to move it on. I think the gist of what you're getting at is the concern about. The way that middle school has typically been and having a change because of the situation we're in. And I don't know that there is a a resolution to that tonight, is there?
No, not right now.
So can we note the concern and circle back to it on Monday?
Yeah, I think that the major part of that is part B, though.
I was gonna say, I think her bigger concern is the part B. I don't think, Kathy, I don't think I'm going to have any better answer on Monday than I do tonight, quite frankly. Because we can only run with the stuff that we're running with right now and we don't know what might happen with that stuff. In three or four weeks, same with our children. So there's still too many. Things in in the air right now that could change in a dime that we don't know.
Okay. All right, um, so as I I said earlier, we don't have to vote on anything tonight. We had tremendous amount of questions and they. Very appreciative to this school committee, as all the parents. Who, um, share their questions and I'm glad we were able to, um, go through them tonight. Uh, beginning of the meeting, we were presented with, um, some information from Steve Cullinan about. The high school. Um, I think that, and I'm not sure what the best way is to proceed. At this point, if people have, um, a question, I can pull the committee to see who has a question. And then if people want to weigh in with an opinion, what are your thoughts, Brooke? What do you, what do you think?
I I think I'm just looking for like a bit of a litmus test to know, uh, for folks to know if, because if you've. If you really disagree with our thinking, I think I would like to know that as well.
Okay.
With regards to the high school right now, I think that we. We come to you only after we've done a lot of research. We've done a lot of connections. We've, you know, we we've reached out to. People that are experiencing the same issues that we are as we are all, you know, again, and and to whatever parents so that, you know. Nobody wants to reinvent the wheel and we certainly don't want to reinvent the wheel either. And so, you know, we look to others that are being successful or or seeing a way through this. And that's kind of what we're presenting to you tonight, saying. We're kind of hitting the wall here and, you know, with the high school and a hybrid model, we're, we're not so sure that we can find our way. To the other side of this and feel that we are presenting the very best. Educational opportunities we can for our children at the high school level right now, if we're doing a hybrid.
So we want to just, I just want to do a a check-in. Where do we stand with regard to the idea presented by Steve Cullinan that the high school, uh, um. Uh, have a different approach to reopening and that it be, um. A fully remote for students, teachers would teach in their classrooms, there would be the opportunity. For, um, uh, individuals or very small cohorts of of students. Um, to meet as need be if there were problems. Um, so let's start there. So Mary, what what are your thoughts?
Okay, so I I am in favor of the, uh, fully remote. High school level and the hybrid on the elementary and middle, but, um, but Brooke had also asked whether there would be anything that we would be wanting to see. In terms of, and I'm going to stick with the high school right now, and the fully, and the fully remote. Um, and and Joel talked about, um, that there was remote one point O and now two point O will be coming up and. And I have every confidence that it will be better. Um, I have confidence in teaching and learning. Um, but I do want to echo, uh, what, uh, what a certain number of parents have have talked to, talked to us about or emailed us about. Um, in that it didn't, um, remote learning didn't work for all students. Some students, it was terrific. Um, and and here's, and here's my concern. That I'm happy, as Brooke said, that we would have our Neshoba teachers. Um, that we've chosen carefully and they are well qualified and have them teaching, absolutely. However, teaching face-to-face and teaching online are not the same thing and our teachers know this because they experienced this. And I've talked before about the fact that I taught in the virtual high school. I look back and so it was like over eight years I I taught there. And I had to learn because I had taught, you know, in person, I had to learn. What it was to teach online. And I can tell you that there are best practices. And so that's what I would be looking for, that, um, there is so much that teachers can do. If a teacher takes. His course and just tries to teach it, um, the way he would face-to-face. Not taking advantage of what online can actually be because online can have small groups, it can have cooperative learning, it can have social emotional learning. And it has ways, there are ways to bring students more into a sense of community. Now, the state has two Commonwealth, at least two, virtual high schools, Greenfield and Teca Academy, which are totally online. And, um, it would just seem to me that the the states and so many people are looking at, uh, remote. Why wouldn't they have some kind of remote learning coaches? Who especially during the ten days of professional development could work with individual teachers, teachers. Uh, they can work in their departments, obviously, with department chair people, but people who are well schooled in these best practices. And I think it would, um, and might have to stretch out past those ten days because I'll tell you. I designed courses and it was, uh, learning by design that we would do the whole course and have the whole things, you know, all laid out. It'll take more than that, but I just don't want to see this online learning not take advantage of. The the best practices that are out there so that our teachers have all the tools. Uh, it'll take them a while. They'll have to practice and and students can help too because. Online, you can share responsibility with students. So I know that this isn't exactly a question. It's it's giving support to administration, but it's also saying. Let's make this for our high school students as well as any other remote learning. Uh, for our our elementary and middle school, the very best it can be. And it's going to take some time to get to excellent. But I haven't heard too much about that and that's what I want to say.
Thank you.
I think Steve, Steve may have wanted to respond, I think.
Steve, did you ever want to say something? Go ahead.
Real, real quick, we we understand the PD part of it and we we had some teachers that did really some, really some outstanding things. We're, we're, we're going to look to try to get them to. To work with our teachers that that struggled with a little bit more. So we're, we're absolutely on board with what you're saying and we're looking. Anywhere we can find any PD to to put this in place, especially the extra days that we have before school actually begins. So. We're, we're all, we're in favor of what you're saying, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, Joseph.
Matt, can you just clarify, what what are we doing here? You're just looking for.
I'm looking to see whether or not you're supportive of the idea of the high school going to a totally remote model and not. Um, and for the reasons Steve mentioned, many of which have to do with safety and, um. Um, good teaching practices, et cetera. So, um.
This is the recommendation coming, this is the recommendation coming from the principal. Regarding, I couldn't support it more. Good luck. I I couldn't support you more, Mr. Cullinan.
Thank you. Brett.
Yeah, I need to explore any and all options, right?
Yeah. Thank you. Um, Rich.
Uh, I've got the experts and administrators that have been thinking about this over and over again and. You know, I want to talk to some more kid people, but it sounds like a sound and well thought out. Idea and, uh, they're going to have a plan to execute on it. So I think that it's prudent.
Okay, thank you. Steve.
Uh, I think it's an excellent idea. Uh, I'm glad that we're, we're willing to go against the general grain and. Do our K through eight in one direction and our high school in another. And I just had a a question for Joel. Um, I also heard yesterday that the cohorts were being designed.
Wait a minute, you're off topic, Steve. Can you hold on to that question?
Sure.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Um, Mike.
Sorry about that. I had to unmute myself. Um, so I very much appreciate. How much thought has gone into the decisions that were being sort of, uh, painted into a corner with, um. I very much appreciate how challenging logistically, um, our options are and how limited our options are. Um, and I can speak from multiple perspectives. Um, I don't agree with the remote model. Um, and I will, I'll just give you some thoughts as to why I don't, uh, support. A remote model for our high school. First of all, I don't know that our high school kids are any, um, less. Uh, vulnerable to virtual learning than our K through eight students. Um, I think that at at their core, they're still children and those children still need relationships. Um, and I have always said this, that there is absolutely no substitute for direct instruction. There is no substitute for in-person learning. Um, remote relationships are fundamentally different from direct relationships. Um, I would say by going remote, we would be removing an essential opportunity. To build lifelong, positive, lasting child adult relationships. Uh, and that really concerns me. I think at the very, very least, what we had going in the spring. Was that I had kids, as a teacher, I had kids from September all the way to March. I had forged a relationship. We had a rapport. If we're going to start the year at the high school with no relationships and no rapport. That's going to be a, that's going to set the tone in an entirely different path for the rest of the year. Um, I, I think when we look at models throughout the world of countries that have gone back and Amy, I I appreciate. The article that you sent, um, from the New England, New England Journal of, uh, of Medicine, I believe. Um. Every time there's a country that went back, uh, in person and saw a spike. You could go back and you could say, here are all the precautionary mistakes that we made. In other words, those were preventable. We had been so incredibly thoughtful. About how we are going to return and the precautions that we're taking that. We can avoid the things that other countries have done. We can look, we can, we can look at the research. These are all over the world. This isn't just one part of the world. Um, you know, I think when we talk about. Um, cohorts not being the same at the high school, I think we can, uh, stagger passing time, you know, to reduce interaction. Um, when we talk about, um. You know, the hybrid model of of communication, I again, I think direct communication is is inherently more effective. And more meaningful than, uh, a virtual communication. I don't, I I I don't believe that our kids should be starting the year on screens. I think our kids should be starting the year, interacting with adults, establishing a rapport. Um, and and moving forward in that direction. Um, you know, we talk about, uh, uh, Steve, you you spoke a little bit about, um, having a limited number of hours. Uh, it's possible to double up our lessons, right? So in other words, if I could teach twice a week for an hour and a half, I'd effectively get those four hours, those four lessons that we would be teaching. Um, for a typical week. So I think that there are ways around those concerns and I, and I I am always for, um. And and what I'm not hearing as much of, not that it's not being taken into consideration. I know how thoughtful. Our administration has been, but I am looking for the highest academic density and I know that we all are. And when we talk about putting our kids at risk, we are not just talking about putting our kids. At a physiological risk. We are talking about putting them at an academic risk. Um, and I really have concerns that isolating our kids. Them and a screen, them and images of their peers, them and images of their teachers. Is, uh, is really detrimental to their health. Uh, and I, and I fully respect that we are not committing either way. Um, I I just feel like we need to really think about what this would do long-term for the emotional health of our kids and that's where my concern is. And if if I, and if I can, I would just like to follow up with a very brief question. Is our.
We're not doing questions now. We're just weighing in. So we'll come back to questions if you don't mind.
It's a question about the high school, though.
Uh, please, I'd like to get through and see where everybody weighs in and then we'll come back and do questions and I'll put you first for questions. Okay, Elaine.
Uh, okay, um, I have a couple of questions about the high school too, so you can write those down.
I'll put you number two with a board. Okay.
Um, I think the arguments for remote are strong. Um, I think that the. Uh, mental health issue of isolation is also really important. It's the obvious downside to all of this. Um, but I think that there's also, um, something to be said for consistency. There's a lot going on in this time, both in school and out of school, that is far beyond our control and it's all very, very complicated and we. Have asked ourselves and everybody else to just be very, very flexible as things change and move and and we have to adapt. So any things that we can simplify, things that we can keep consistent. Um, I think there's something to be said for that because I do think we're going to look back in a month or two and say, oh. We may, we should have just gone remote because we're all remote now anyway and having the time and the runway to really get it right. Um, I I think that there's value in that and I also think that something that's been weighing really heavy on me lately. And this is not specific to the high school. I think it it holds for everybody. Is that, um, you know, we're trying to minimize interaction between all these kids. And yet, as I was driving to the dentist today, I saw a hundred kids on a field playing lacrosse. Those kids were not all in the same educational cohorts. So the, we're trying so hard to minimize interaction and then they're all going to interact anyway. Um, and and as much as I would hate to sacrifice the academic component to that, it, some part of me feels like the safest thing to do. Is to minimize the interaction academically, do it remote because we know we can't control the interaction that they're going to have outside of school. So those are my thoughts at the moment.
Thank you. Leah.
Um, so I'm struggling to give you my answer without having answers to my questions.
And what we're consider, we're giving feedback about. Whether or not it's worth pursuing this idea that the high school. Go to a different model than the rest for the reasons that Steve, um, created, uh, stated at the outset.
Right, there are, I mean, he could say to, yeah, but he just said, said to us, we want to go remote, but like I, I don't know if that's a good idea because my four questions aren't answered.
Okay, then we'll come back to you and ask you questions unless you have us, and then you can let us know. Okay? Um, Amy.
I am also really struggling with, um, with this because I wasn't expecting. To, I had no idea this was coming, so I I was really focusing my energy on trying to be prepared for. Asking questions on the draft plan, which I only received yesterday and, um, so.
Excuse me, I sent the draft pa- plan out earlier in the week. So just, but anyway. Um, relative to the high school.
So, uh, I have questions too. I mean, my gut is that as a parent, I don't really. Like the idea of remote, starting off remotely. Um. For the same reasons that Mike elaborated on, um, I worry about. The community, developing community, um, from a remote. Starting off from a remote model and I I, that is one of my questions because I think that was something that. Mr. Cullinan mentioned, um. That a hybrid model would divide the community, but I kind of come at it from a different point of view. And it's a very difficult thing for me to give my, you know, do a litmus, litmus test on because there's. There's so much that goes into the remote, remote model at the high school. That I'm, I I need to understand more.
Sure. Um, let me see. So Amy, I think I get everybody except me. So, um, I have sat on the high school reopening task force. So I've attended most of the meetings and I have to say that people have worked very hard. To look at a lot of options, especially with regard to the hybrid, um, option. And I have the, perhaps, the, um. Benefit of having been a middle school principal and a high school principal. So I know how differently, um, programming is. How the day is organized and Brooke gave me a heads up to this and I had been thinking prior to this. um, that um, little kids, elementary school kids are just so compliant. Um, they're in smaller groups, they wanna please the teacher, they do basically what they're told. Uh, middle school kids are organized differently, and um, they are persuadable. Um, there's just so many moving parts at the high school in a normal program. And um, I, and I expressed to Brooke my concern about um, basically safety, health and safety, and being able to, and Steve alluded to this, I'll use the word control for lack of a better word, um, being able um to control uh things at the high school. And I'm not gonna elaborate um, too much, but I also um agree with the Elaine in terms of this idea that um, this is a, it's not the best way, um ideally. Um, the way we usually do things during normal times is, is the best way. But here we are trying to figure out how to deliver instruction to give the kids the most um, um, time with their teacher. Um, but when school's over, um, they are with their friends, they are getting together, they are socializing. So, um, where people of a certain age are, are hunkered down and not socializing, uh, people of another certain age um can escape those confines and, and socialize and do other things. And I also um want to respect the, the in light of the tremendous amount of work and thought that has gone in on this um, uh, of the high school staff and Steve, if, if this is their, their recommendation, um, then I would, I would wanna support. Again, not ideal, not the best, but in terms of being able to deliver education and work with kids in that way for their school day, um, um, I think that it's worth um pursuing. So. Um, okay, so Mike, your question.
Mike, you're muted.
I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. Um, my question is, is pretty straightforward. Is the potential shift to go from a hybrid model at the high school to a remote model primarily a health and safety concern, or is it primarily a logistical concern?
Steve?
Well, actually, I can, I'll, I'll start too on that, and then Steve can respond. I don't think it was ever a logistical concern necessarily for me. I, I actually, to be honest, I think from my lens, it was more an academic, from, from my lens, academic and safety. So Steve, uh, that, that's from my lens, but Steve may have a different lens.
No, I, I agree. Safety was, safety's a big concern, um, but the academic, academic side is important as well. Um, we, we just think that the, we think students would have more content with the remote than they would in a, in a, in a hybrid type situation.
So, just as a follow-up, is this, and I'm sorry if I'm going a little bit deeper.
No, go ahead.
Is this safety for our students or safety for our faculty?
I don't think we were thinking, I, I don't think we talked about uh the staff as much. I think we were focused when we were talking about this, we were talking more about the students. I don't, that doesn't mean that we don't care for our staff by any stretch of the imagination, but I don't, it wasn't the staff that was, was driving this decision. From my lens, I think we were really looking at doing what we thought was the best for the high school students. I think, you know, my concern, I, as would be all parents' concerns, is making sure those kids are ready for college and what is, what's the best way to approach that. And I think that's, that's certainly what was driving me. So I don't know, Steve, what your thoughts are.
No, I agree, and we wanna, we wanna protect both. Um, the, the consideration was mostly student-wise, based on on the, the congestion in the hallways and, and, and the movement of the students from place to place, and trying to keep each of the rooms clean. Um, essentially, we'd have to be cleaning desks every, every single period, because we'd have, we'd have twenty or ten, fifteen more kids in every, every single period to every single room. So, so it was a student concern as well as a teacher concern.
Okay, um, I let, let me let Lorraine, Elaine ask a question. Elaine?
Sure. Todd, you mentioned before that one of the problems with the, the live streaming was the bandwidth and the technological um capacity. But if the high school teachers are in the building and they're, and the kids are all remote, how is that different in terms of the technology?
From what I understand, you will have every single teacher in the building, you know, live streaming remote. And so what we have been, what has been reported back from teachers and administration, that like Google Meet um is very, very choppy, and then Zoom does not work on the type of Chromebooks that we have in district. So, uh, and she's not here to speak more specifically to it, as he could, but he's looking at right now what it would, you know, what it would take to increase all of that so that it would, you know, move forward with ease. But we, we would basically have every teacher in every room, you know, doing two-way communication at the same time all day. Um, and just for example, like during our PD day, we have to ask students, we had to ask everybody to please turn off your hotspots so that, you know, people who were presenting in, in, in workshops wouldn't lose connection. Um, so there's just a lot that would have to be done, and a lot of school districts are looking into it um and having to really beef up their, their technological infrastructure to accommodate this.
But would, sorry, is that for the remote model? Anyway?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't hear you.
But don't, wouldn't we have to do the exact same thing for this remote model?
How so?
Well, if the teachers are all in their classrooms and they're on Google Meet teaching.
Correct. So that's why we're looking into what it was, what it is going to cost to potentially increase this kind of bandwidth for that to happen.
Okay, but practically speaking, we're, we can't actually execute a remote model right now? Is that what you're saying?
Um, well, we did, I mean, that's, it's a great question. I, I mean, she's not here to answer it, Elaine, so, and I'm sorry that he's not here. Um, he could answer that probably better than I could, because I'm not a tech specialist. But based on what we saw in the spring, um, that was the report back, that we need, we're really looking into what, what we need to do to Google Meet, or what we need to do in terms of platforms to increase that connectivity.
So Todd, uh, obviously, there's a, a time constraint here. Would we be able to, would you be able, you or she be able to report to the committee about that on Monday at the meeting?
I, I, I know she's looking into it now. He's on vacation this week. Um, and the last report out was he was getting, he was getting quotes and pricing in terms of what that would take to do.
Okay, but-
So the answer is yes.
Yes, what?
We can get an update from Chi on Monday.
Okay, thank you. Um, Leah.
Okay, hi, everybody again. So, um, I guess my questions for Steve or Brooke or Todd, uh, either or. Um, would a hybrid model at the high school do more damage to our electives than remote?
No.
Yeah, I don't think so.
It's, it's pretty much, it would be running the same schedule essentially, so it, it, it wouldn't. Um, some of the, some of the electives, some of the music electives may, may have to change from, from a band elective, it would, it would, they would, they would be running a band program, but it'd also be doing more stuff with, with students doing videotapes, uh, doing videos of themselves playing, and then they would be trying to put those things together to, to, to make a final project on that kind of thing. Um, I had a, I had a meeting with the arts and, and music teachers this week, and, and they were talking about how they were gonna try to make things work in, in a remote model and in a hybrid model. Hybrid's more difficult music-wise, because they can't be singing and playing instruments in the building. Um, remotely, they could, they could play their instruments in, on, on the computer and, and they can then mix them, I don't know how that works. I'm, I'm not a music guy, but if you're talking about football, I can tell you, but I'm, I'm not sure how that works. But um, I, 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 I believe that they'll be able to do a better job remotely, honestly.
Yeah, but we talked about eliminating electives, so that's no longer on the table if we go hybrid.
Yeah, I'm, 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 myself, I'm trying to keep every elective as is, as much as possible. Um.
Okay.
That, that's, that's my goal, and, and, and I'm hopeful that we can do that. At this point, I, I think for the most part, we can. There may be some, some tweaks that we have to make, but not, not wholesale, that's for sure.
Okay, um, would special education students who have significant or so-called high need, would they be full remote as well?
No, I, no, and I think Joan can speak to that. No.
No, high need students that we're gonna recommend that we do in-person services.
Five days, Joan?
I haven't um comprehensively put the model together yet um with Brooke, but it's certainly at least four days. It, it depends on the population of students. I'm still working out some creative things for our other students and programs.
Great.
And we're, we're actually putting together a student support center um for, for non-special ed students that may be having some struggles. And we're hopeful that if they're struggling on the remote side, we can bring them in and give them some coaching as to how they can get themselves back on track. Um, and we haven't, we haven't finalized that yet, but we're putting a room together right now, right, right inside the door. It's beautiful, so.
It, it is. It's exciting. It's very exciting, and when we can roll that out, I'm really excited to roll that out.
Okay.
Thank you, Rob.
Um.
Thank you, Rob, yes.
Um, okay, so my other question is-
Leah, I want to let, I wanna allow Amy an opportunity to ask a question, and I'll come back to you in light, if you have more questions. Amy. Amy.
Yep, I had to unmute myself. Sorry, Leah. Um. Okay, so could you explain how you think was, why the remote model would offer more content? Uh, because I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding that if the same amount of electives are gonna be offered in a hybrid model.
Because in, in the, in the, our plan right now in the, in the hybrid model is we would be going to a more of a block-type schedule with only four periods per day. Four on, four on Monday and three on, on, uh, Tuesday, four on Thursday, three on Friday. Um, but the, but the students would only be meeting with the teacher one period a week, one and a half periods, because they'd be meeting with them remotely for a shorter period of time on Wednesdays. Whereas in the, in the, in the um remote model, we're looking, just if we, if we stayed just with that so, same schedule, they'd be meeting with each class twice, two and a half times a week. We're actually looking at possibly changing that around a little bit. I can't, I can't say for sure how we're gonna do that yet. But, but that we could go to a, a seven-period day in the remote with shorter classes, so that every class would be, would meet four, four and a half times, because it'd be a much shorter period on Wednesday. So they would, they would definitely be getting more content. It'd definitely be getting more interaction with the, with the individual teachers, and, and they definitely have the whole group um class together. Um, so I, I, so there's a lot of good things about that, and, and we would much rather have all the kids back in the building. But that's just not the way things are working right now. This, this, this seems to be the best of all worlds.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna miss another opportunity to thank you. I know that you've put a lot of work and, and thought into this, and I'm not trying to second-guess any of it. I'm just trying to wrap my head around.
I understand. It's, it's confusing. It's all I understand.
Um, but the other thing I was wondering is if we do go to a remote model um, based on your recommendation, is there a way that each class, each like freshman, sophomore, juniors, and seniors could be brought in at the beginning of the school year to meet their teachers just for a day or something like some, is there some balance there that? I don't know. I, I think that's one of my concerns, is that they, there's no opportunity to meet.
Well, I think, uh, Steve, let me take that one, then you can run with it. Um, I think that's one of the things, Amy, because I know that you're asking specifically for the high school, but I would want you to know that we're looking at that across the district. Uh, so it's not just a high school issue, because we, we have concerns about that, even as we phase in our kids at all grade levels, that we are contemplating what could that look like. Um, I know that your question is really specific for Steve, but I would want you to know that we're having that discussion right across, right across the district.
Okay.
Steve?
Yeah, I, I think that, that's one of my biggest concerns as well, because when, when we went out in March, the teachers knew the students, like Mike was saying. Uh, now they don't. It, we're, we're gonna have to try to figure some way out to get them to, to get some interaction there. First off, with the freshmen, we're hopeful that, that we can bring the freshmen in for, for mini chieftain day, so to speak, um, where we'll bring twenty kid, twenty students in, um, give them the spiel, show them the building, get, get, get a feel. They'll, we'll bring them around and meet their teachers, because the teachers will be there. They'll have an idea of what's going on with that. The, the, the older students have been there, that's not as big an issue. But they still do need to connect with their teachers if they hadn't had that teacher before, so that's something we'll have to look at, absolutely.
Um, Mike, did you have another question?
Um, I actually can summarize my question in an email. I'm gonna do it, so I'll defer to Leah's questions.
Okay, thank you. Leah.
Um, so I just have a question about science classes, especially AP classes. Do you have part of your, part of your plan is to perhaps run labs in the building?
Uh, no, but, uh, the, the lab, the whole lab situation, um, Linda Pierce, our department head, and, and they've been looking into, through, they've been talking to people around the state about how, how, how are they gonna run labs. Um, it's difficult, even in a hybrid with labs, because the, the kids are working too close together. Um, I know that she was talking about doing some, they were gonna videotape some labs and then have, have the students watch the, the lab and, and work with them. Um, in the hybrid model, they've got some, and I, I don't wanna, I'm, I'm certainly not an expert on science, that's for sure. The labs aren't my thing. But, but they, they are working, uh, plan to try to get those labs into place as a department, um, to make them work. They can't do them the way they normally were because of the, the social distancing and whatnot, so, but they are, they are gonna try to keep labs cooking.
Hmm. Um, okay, so I guess you've answered most of the other pieces. Um, I'm sorry if I tune this out for a quick second, but whatever you're doing for full remote, we would be able to transfer to the hybrid easily enough if it like got better, remarkably better?
That's our goal. I mean, that, that would, that's definitely the goal. Um, and I, and I think, I think our thinking on that is that it would be easier for us to transition to that, because we'd have the kids in classes where we could actually explain to them what the next day is gonna look like. Um, right now, uh, we can, we can send out stuff to them how it's gonna work, but when they come in, it's just gonna be a mob. Um, but we're hopeful that if we have the kids in classes and they're, they're in just, they have structure in their, in their, in their day, we can then explain to them, on Monday, you're gonna come in, and there's only gonna be four classes, you're gonna have to sit six feet apart. Um, we're, we're gonna have ten-minute passing periods, uh, and, and we, we haven't figured it out yet, but, but freshmen are gonna give you lace right at the bell, sophomores five minutes later, and, and so on, so that we don't have so many people in the hallways, and, and we'll try to work it that way.
Right. Um, I guess, um, my, my one last thing is that I, I'm really worried about seniors, and I'm really worried about all the things that are required of the high school institution for seniors in the month of September. So do you have your guidance team like on task now or like soon? I know that they're not contracted to work right now, but um, you know, like all that senior stuff is, it should be happening.
Jody Speck has been unbelievably helpful all summer long.
All summer.
Yep.
So people should email her.
She, she's on top of it, yes. Um, that, and they can email me and I can get the message to her, um, because she isn't supposed to be working, but she is. But if they, but, but for this, she, she has a plan for the senior stuff, I, I, I promise. She, she's working, she's working on that, yep, with Naviance and, and. The SATs, we're actually gonna run the SATs on the twenty ninth. Um, that, we, we just made that decision today. Um, so we're gonna try to get the kids, there's only a hundred kids, we're gonna, we've got a plan to put them in the two gyms. I don't know if I was supposed to mention that at night, tonight or not.
No, that's okay, but I think that you've, your plan, though, is really detailed for that, Steve, or we would never have supported it. You know, I think it's a really good plan, and it, it follows all the guidelines, and so I think that's the only reason why we were comfortable in supporting it.
And our biggest concern with the SATs was that they've, they've missed so many of them, and the, the, the kids are getting nervous about it now, and, and I can understand. Parents and, and kids are getting nervous about it, so we are gonna, we are gonna do them on the twenty ninth, and we've got a whole bunch of stuff in place that we're gonna make sure it's safe, so they'll be about ten feet, nine feet apart in the gyms to take the test, so.
Okay.
So if anyone has any more questions for Steve, raise your hand and I will recognize you.
Hey Kathy, this is Rich.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rich. Do you have a question?
Yeah, recognize me if, if I'm not, if I'm not at the front of the line, it can come back to me.
Well, I'm recognizing this icon of a telephone. Looks nothing like you, but go ahead. I'm sorry, I, when I don't, out of sight, out of mind.
Good thing I would say, just as a general comment, and, and there's a question here, is um, I hear some skepticism about remote teaching or, and remote learning. And perhaps there is some academic studies or something else to support the decision. I, I, I personally believe in it. Uh, I did a graduate program that way. Uh, but you know, I was much older than these kids are, so I know it can be successful, and there's a lot of innovation in this country around it. Um, so perhaps Brooke could, or, or the team could produce some studies that would reassure parents uh that even though this is different, and it may not be what they've expected and, you know, what we would have liked. Um, here's the advocacy. Um, it's gonna be missing some parts, but it, you know, there's some academic rigor behind it.
Thank you. Um, Amy.
Will we be able to see sample schedules for a remote learning environment? And details about the support rooms that would be provided? And details about the support rooms that would be provided?
We're, we're still, we're still working on that in the task force. We, we want to make sure we've got everybody on board with what we're talking about. But as soon as we have it set up, we'll certainly get it out to folks.
So what I would like to suggest is just as we did with the questions for today, if, if I send out a a sheet for questions specifically related to high school doing full remote, I'll get that out to folks tomorrow and you can start populating it. Mike, you said you're going to do an email, which is fine. So that way, Steve and Brooke and Todd can see what is on people's minds specific to this and perhaps those things can be addressed on Monday. Does that sound okay?
Sounds good to me, yeah.
Okay. All right, now I promised Steve Rubenstein that he could ask Joel a question. Do you remember what your question was? I think you have to unmute.
Okay, Joel, I sat in on the task force at Hale yesterday afternoon and it struck me that as you're putting together the cohorts in an alphabetical order, would it not be more, would it not be more logistically sane to put the cohorts together geograph, geographically or by neighborhoods as opposed to alphabetical? Alphabetical would be all over the place from a geographical standpoint.
Well, I, I can give you my opinion of that, not, which may or may not be representative of Mrs. Friend or Mr. Grady, but with our initial survey data at Florence Sawyer, there were a significant number of parents that suggested that they were going to drive their kids and not take the transportation. So I don't know that it would have much of an impact on transportation geographically. You know, I, I, I don't know.
Okay, just a thought.
Oh, Brooke? Yeah, and I, and I, then I have a couple of other wrap-up things I want to. Okay, are you going to respond to Steve? I am. Steve, one of the big things for us is that families had asked that they wanted to make sure that their families were together, particularly for daycare purposes. So that was why we started with the with the alphabetized notion to begin with. And I think when we had talked to the high school, that was also a, a piece of the high school thought was critical for us too, was to start, start organizing them alphabetically first. But now I would also say that the team will, the teams at the schools will pull together their cohorts. And then they will sit down with Michelle Cody, who's been on your meetings before, who oversees our bus coordinating and coordination, and she will work with them for the remain, the remainder, remaining piece. So it's a really super big puzzle here that we're trying to put together. So your thinking is is spot on, but, but we've, we did tell our families because of the surveys, exactly as Joel said, they really want to try to keep their kids together on those days. And so that, that was one of the reasons why we did what we did. Okay. Yes, Todd?
I want to, I want to come back to Elaine's question about so we, so we can't actually do remote learning. So that isn't the case. We can certainly do remote learning when we have teachers in the building and no students in the building. We're looking at what it might cost or if we need to increase the bandwidth when we are in a hybrid model and also having remote learning academies at the same time. That's the research we're doing right now. If we have to increase that when we've got both of those models working together at the same time. So I felt, I think I felt a little bit, whoa, so I wanted to get the right information, but that we can certainly do remote learning. That's not the issue. We're looking into making sure we, if we have to have Zoom and Google Meet, two different platforms so that there aren't any glitches. And then if we have a hybrid model also with a remote learning academy at the same time, we're looking and testing right now what that will take to make sure that we can do it and what the cost would be if we need to beef it up at all, at all. So Chi will be there on Monday to talk specifically about that with all of you.
Okay.
Sorry about that, if, if I confused you.
That's okay. Brooke? I, actually, I was going to go down the same road as Todd was going down right now, but I'm, I'm going to, with him doing that, I'm going to kind of spring on something different. I, I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind too is again, keeping in mind exactly what, what Patrick said right at the beginning. This is a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. And you know, our, our buildings, I think that we did exceptionally well as a Shoba Regional School District at the beginning of this because we didn't even have the software and hardware that, that we had to have during that crisis moment. I mean, that's not how we, we built our programs. We never built it for, for a crisis of a pandemic. You know, we were going with the one-to-ones and, and, you know, exploring different software or, or different platforms and all this kind of thing. So I, you know, I, I think that Todd and his team and she have done amazing work in this area. But one of the things is like just that whole level of bandwidth and some of the issues, like we learned so much through those couple of months that we, you know, it's kind of like that notion that you don't make the same mistake twice, right? You learn from it, you take a look at it and say, okay, what can we do to beef it up? Exactly as Todd just said. So, you know, I, I think he, he laid it out perfectly, but I would tell you that, yeah, there's, there's work for us to do in this area still. As, as we look at going to whether it's a hybrid or it doesn't matter what next year looks like, there's still work that has to be done in this area. The other thing too, I want to go back to, you know, and I know Amy, you're, you're right in terms of like, you weren't expecting this tonight for the high school. You're absolutely right. I don't think we were expecting it, to be honest with you. Because you know, it's just that, and, and I think Todd says to me, this to me all the time, we're living this like 24/7. I mean, he and I are living this 24/7. Well, Steve would say the same, Joan would say the same, every one of our team members would say that, right? So we're living it 24/7. So when we see that we need to pivot, then that, we say, okay, have we done our due diligence? Are we ready to pivot? Is that where we're at? You know, and so goes back to the whole nimble thing. I think one of the great gifts that the commissioner gave us today was a little bit of gift of extra time now. So I feel really good tonight, say, okay, here's where we're at. These are the issues that we've come up against. This is why we're pivoting the way that we are. But quite frankly, on Monday night, if, you know, if you come back and say, yeah, we thought about it and we, we want the high school on the hybrid, Steve and I will say, okay, it's not what we think is best, but, but we, we will, we will respect the decision and we'll move forward and do what you ask us to do. So you know, please don't feel that we're trying, like I think it was that Mike said that. I want to be really clear and I know that you didn't, I don't think that you meant it the way that it came out. You know, we're not painting anyone in corners. So please don't feel that, you know, because that's not our goal. Our goal is to lay out everything that we've got in front of us in total transparency and say, here's where we're at. And so that's why we're not afraid of the, like, all the questions that are coming and that. And there's questions we don't have answers to. We'll tell you, we don't have the answers and here's where we're, we're, we're at right now. Todd said, you know, as we were talking about this tonight before we came on the meeting, we look to our school committee as partners in this process. We look to our parents as partners. We look to our students as partners. This is not something we can fix alone as we try to navigate through the next part of our journey. So we need our communities right now to help us think through, so that, because a lot of times, and it goes back to the now that, you know, the, the steering committee helps to, to support is where it just is so much nicer when we're coming at this, trying to think it all together. And so I'm so appreciative of all the emails that we get. I'm so appreciative of the school committee's support and and it's okay to challenge our thinking. We're, we're so okay with that. But, but it's, this is tough. There's a, you know, I think, I don't know, maybe was Mike even an email sent to you? I think it said at one point in time, sometimes it just feels like lose-lose, like we're trying so hard for people who try to find the win-win situations. This is a tough one. This is a tough one to find that win-win, you know, so. Uh, thank you. Okay, so there'll be more opportunities for questions. Like I said, if we could front-load them for, for Steve and Brooke and Todd, I'll send that sheet around tomorrow. But I think it's three hours and fifteen minutes. Not, definitely not our shortest, definitely not our longest meeting. But again, I think that this committee, and I've said it again many, many times, and I do mean it, thoughtful, thorough, responsive. And I, I know that I appreciate it as the chair and I know that most of the feedback we've gotten from our community, whether they agree or disagree, either they, the start or end with thank you for the time, the effort, the work. And I don't envy you your job. That's in there somewhere. So I'm going to close this part of the agenda and I'd like Elaine, if there's no objection, to move to the consent agenda.
Okay, I moved to approve the consent agenda of August 6th, 2020, containing the meeting minutes of July 29th, 2020.
Second. Amy is seconding. So roll call Kathy Cody and yes, Joseph Leeson?
Yes.
Leah Viverito?
Yes.
Stephen Rubenstein?
Yes.
Elaine Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Mary McCarthy?
Yes.
Mike Horash?
Yes.
Brett Collins?
Yes.
Sharon is absent. Rich Echo?
Yes.
And Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Okay, before I entertain a motion to adjourn just briefly, I will be on vacation next week. I'll just be on the Cape and I'll be able to hopefully be on the meeting, but I'm not sure of the connectivity and any other factors. So I don't want to get kicked off or whatever. So long story short, I've asked Elaine if she would share the meeting. And after promising her several things, she agreed. And also the other thing is.
It's going to be eighteen hours long.
Um, the other thing is from the ninth through the the sixteenth, I'll have a message on my email relative to being unavailable and Elaine will be responding to emails to the school committee on behalf of the committee. So just, just to be aware of, of that. So with all of that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 9:17.
That moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Leah's second? Little things, Leah. Okay, roll call vote Kathy Cody and yes, Joseph Leeson?
Yes.
Leah Viverito?
Yes.
Stephen Rubenstein? Elaine Sanfilippo?
Yes.
Mary McCarthy?
Yes.
Mike Horash?
Yes.
Brett Collins?
Yes.
Rich Echo?
Yes, ma'am.
And Amy Cohen?
Yes.
And we are adjourned again. Thank you so, so much. Enjoy the rest of your evening and I will see you soon. Be well.